Thank you. Everyone heard the gavel, I knew that, so.
Yeah.
All right. So first up on the agenda will be a public comment and we have five speakers, four of which designate what they were going to speak about, the fifth, actually, three did, two did not. And since all I got was a one-word description, I don't know if it specifically relates to an agenda item or not. So in the sake of just efficiency, I'm going to have everyone speak at the beginning, rather than try to interpret what somebody's saying and whether it applies to an agenda item and so forth. So, first up is Randy Lawson from Hudson. You have three minutes, three minutes.
Hi, I'm Randy Lawson and I'm a resident here in Hudson. And I'm here to speak about your consideration of adopting the Title IX rules that have been requested to be implemented starting this school year. And the first thing I'd like to point out is that right now 26 states already have injunctions against implementing these Title IX rules. Just in the last six weeks, eight states have been added and three organizations, Moms for Liberty, Young Americans for Freedom, and Female Athletes United have also been included. The addition of those groups means that we will, if you do implement Title IX, you're going to have to, in addition, figure out how are you going to protect and accommodate families that are covered under those organizations that were included in the last court ruling? In my opinion, the implementation of these changes are going to be an assault on every girl in the district. Please, don't sell our girls for a little bit of federal money.
Next up, we have Kristen Hansen of North Hudson, also speaking on Title IX.
I am the mother of two incredible daughters who absolutely love playing sports and everything that comes with them. Winning, losing, working hard, being on a team, and making friends. In 1972, Congress enacted Title IX to ensure equal educational and athletic opportunities for all students regardless of their sex, and to protect the rights of girls and women as fundamentally enshrined in our Declaration of Independence and Constitution of the United States. Prior to Title IX, 15% of college athletes were women and only 1 in 27 girls played sports. Now, over 50 years of progress in equality of opportunity have been rescinded by radically redefining biological sex as gender identity. It's a step backward for women's rights, jeopardizes student safety and privacy, and destroys fairness in women's sports. It essentially de-titles Title IX in its meaning and purpose. The new Title IX regulations are unconstitutional, erase women and girls, eliminate due process, compel speech, and strip parents of their fundamental right to direct the upbringing of their child, including decisions regarding their education, medical care, morality, and religion. Have you fully read the 1,557 pages of the new rules? If you have, then you'd understand that Title IX now requires schools treat students who suffer from gender dysphoria as though they were the opposite sex, that a male student who identifies as a female must be allowed access to facilities designated for females, such as bathrooms or locker rooms, and to participate in women's sports and organizations. Teachers and students must refer to a gender dysphoric child by preferred pronouns and alternative name. And no formal documentation is required to affirm gender identity. Additionally, if the administration has not provided a clear definition of gender identity, a male student could easily switch between identifying as male or female. Is that the kind of reality you want to create for our kids? An environment ruled by fear, fear of misgendering someone, fear of using the bathroom or locker room during the day, fear of being seriously injured in sports? The district has said it values offering a safe and healthy environment for all students. So please, don't make our children pawns of this reality. Even the universities of Wisconsin have suspended permanent and emergency rulemaking on July 30th due to the federal injunction of Kansas versus the U.S. Department of Education. No child is born in the wrong body. Boys and girls are perfect just the way they are. Radical. Radical gender ideology has no public schools, and I will not allow my daughters to be erased. Please, do not make any revisions to the nondiscrimination policy.
Next up, we have Joseph Rivera of Hudson, also speaking on Title IX.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to address the inclusion of transgender athletes under Title IX and why I believe it is crucial to carefully consider the implications this has on fairness and equality in sports. Today, I stand before you not just as a concerned citizen, but as a father of a five-year-old girl who loves sports. And like any parent, I want her to have every opportunity to succeed, to grow, and learn the values that come from healthy competition. Title IX was established to ensure that women and girls had equal opportunities in sports and education, a noble cause that we should all celebrate and protect. However, the inclusion of transgender athletes in female sports under Title IX presents a significant challenge to the principles of fairness that the law was designed to uphold. Biological differences between males and female are undeniable. These differences, particularly in strength, speed, and endurance, can have a significant impact on athletic competition. All we have to do is look at a few of the gold medal results from this year's Olympics and we will see the difference. In the 100-meter freestyle swimming, men's gold medal, 46.4 seconds; women's, 52.16 seconds. The 100-meter dash, men's 9.78 seconds; women, 10.72 seconds. The shot put, men's 22.9 meters; women's 20 meters. Long jump, men's 8.48 meters and women's 7 meters. These numbers speak for themselves. Furthermore, there are concerns about the implications of allowing individuals to use opposite-sex bathrooms and locker rooms under the guise of Title IX. This policy poses significant risks to the privacy and safety of our children, especially our daughters. Bathrooms has always been a place of privacy is paramount, and compromising this can lead to discomfort, anxiety, and potential harm. This is not about questioning whether the identity or rights of transgender individuals. Everyone deserves respect and dignity. But in the context of sports, where physical abilities play a crucial role, we must consider the impact on female athletes who have worked tirelessly within a system designed to offer them equal opportunities. In conclusion, we must remember why Title IX was created in the first place, to ensure equal opportunities for women. We must ensure that every girl, including my daughter, have the chance to compete in a safe, fair, and just environment where success is determined by skill, effort, and determination. Thank you.
Next up is Tiffany Norton. You haven't stated what you're speaking about, but you have up to three minutes.
Oh, great. Hi, Tiffany Norton. I am a new resident to Hudson. And if my voice sounds a little bit familiar, it used to be on KS-95, Nickname Bangs, if anybody, anyway. So, a couple KS-95 people, okay? All right. Cool, man. I'm also a stand-up comic, if you know me from that. So, here's the thing, I'm not going to wade into the weeds about like what the details are and everything, because honestly, I've not had enough time to prepare. I am just going to say this. I am the proud mother of a transgender child, okay? Just know that, all right? And I knew at 11-years-old that my son, now son, I named my baby Paige. At the time, I thought that was kind of cool, because it's technically a gender-neutral name. But when he decided to have the courage to come out not as gay, which I had assumed, because as soon as he turned 11, I couldn't get him to wear one pink or purple thing. And I'm a girly girl. You know that I tried, right? And it broke my mother, my, you know, Gage's grandmother's heart, who was a 40-year veteran teacher in the west side of St. Paul, where that teacher had to, my mother, had to learn the customs of 80 different dialects. That's how many they served, okay? I am really horrified how comfortable everybody in this country has gotten about talking about teenagers' bodies. If you talk about your feelings about that, that's cool, but you're really saying it to my face, that my child is wrong, queer is wrong. I'm not saying that children can't be influenced by watching Instagram and someone changed, they're like, ooh, they're doing this now, and I want to be popular with that. But we all did that, right, guys? Didn't we try on different hats? Didn't we all try to belong to different groups? Come on, man. I listened to a lot of Echo and the Bunny Man. That's not a good band, if you guys remember the 80s, all right? So, what I'm saying is, I don't think it is appropriate for grown adults to be talking so casually about what children are doing with their sexual parts, because you're talking about my child. And my child is 25. We got, when he was 18, it was the same rule I had for tattoos. When you're 18, then that's your body. That's yours, right? Up until then legally, I have to make sure that you're okay and you're safe. And I've had to fight bullies my life, right? And I'm tired of having to do it for my kids, too, because it's caused a lot of division in my family. My family is deeply conservative, but this is where we part ways. When people start talking stuff about my kid, and I'm sorry, no offense, but men, stay out of it. If you want to talk about women's bodies, say it to my face, and I'll talk about my child. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. And last up, we have Robert Turner. From Badlands Road, so that's Hudson.
I'm not much at speaking. My name is Robert Turner. All I know is this is unconstitutional, period. It wasn't passed by any Congress anywhere. Mothers for Liberty denounces it, and Young America denounces it, 26 other states denounced it, period. It's unconstitutional, we shouldn't even be here. And it's not personal, it's the Constitution. I believe in the Constitution. That's why we're here. I don't want to live in another country. I don't want to live in another country. I can move to Germany, I have relatives there. My mom came from Germany. I don't want to turn it into Russia. I don't want to turn it into places where he says, oh, you feel bad about something? Here, everybody chip in and we'll help you. It's not like that. We do what we can for everybody. We don't put them in front of everybody else and say, here's somebody really different, which I have a son that's special needs, visually impaired. I don't want any special treatment for him. I want him to work hard and do what's right. And this is unconstitutional. We shouldn't even be here.
All right, very good. That concludes our comments from the public, and now we're up to reports. What's the first report?
We have Financial Services. Oh, sorry, me. I'm up. Wasbe Regional Meeting, so.
All right. I have my microphone on. So, Wasbe, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Regional Meeting is on Wednesday, October 23rd in Menominee. Just wanted to make, put it on the board's radar. So if you do want to attend, let Tim Miner know, we'll get people signed up for that. The regional meeting has a professional development component with it. There's also going to be elections for representatives in Regions 1, 4, 9, 10, and 13, of which we are in Region 4. So you would have an opportunity to elect representatives for Region 4 for the WASB Board, I guess, is kind of how it works. So just wanted to put it on people's radar, make sure that you guys have that. It kind of leads into the next item, which is the Region 4 election for WASB. Scanned into the agenda, you can see the notice for election. You can nominate either fellow board members, or you can nominate board members from other districts as well, but this is all board-related items. So, any questions about Wasbe trainings coming up?
So you're looking for people that are able to know whether they're going to...
Well, you don't even have to tell me today, I just wanted to get it on your radar, you can check your calendars, and then let Tim Miner know if you would like to be signed up to go to that training and regional meeting, so.
Okay.
That's it. That's all I have for those two reports.
All right. Then now, how about Financial Services?
There we go. Bonnie, you're up.
All right. So this is our Financial Services Department. We had a big change this year. Donna Litch was our accounts payable for 23 years, and she retired this year, and we have a new member of our team, which is Andrea Bach.
It's on. It's on.
Yeah.
Geez, guys.
Okay.
Is it okay?
Just keep going.
Okay.
Your microphone's on, keep going.
All right. What are the things we focused on, because we had some changes this year, was cross-training all of our roles. So all of our department has cross-trained this year, so it's been a really nice support system for everybody to know what everybody else is doing in their different roles in our office. We also created a live binder to provide support to our administrative assistance, so it's basically an online binder that has all of our procedures, and then we can update it, and we don't have to create paper, and we had an in-service with the administrative assistants last week, just to provide them support as well. We are increasing our ACH payments to vendors, so rather than paper checks, we're trying to become a little more streamlined on that, so that has been a focus. And then we also transitioned Document Services, which is part of our department, from the middle school to the high school, in getting in preparation for our move over to the middle school. Some of our initiatives are bigger ones, as we've switched to a P-card. So we used to have credit cards that people had, now we have a P-card, which is pretty much the same thing, but we do get rebates. So we had, we piloted it for about half the year and then implemented it, and we had about $4,000. We expect that to go up next year, but that's, you know, trying to become more efficient and bringing funds back to the district. We also automated our purchase order process with Amazon, and we've, so far, for the year, we had over $10,000 in discounts and coupons, so that was a great thing. And then we are working on our paperless initiative, so Student Services, if you can see, we didn't get a before picture, but we had 25 filing cabinets, and we have scanned all those. It's all electronic, so that's Tara's department. And I think they're really liking it, they're able to access everything at their desk, they don't have to go digging in, and we've eliminated a lot of ground space for that. Facilities and grounds is currently, we're scanning all of the floor plans, so if you look over on the right-hand corner, that's kind of how they were stored. So now, they're all electronic, and like Dustin, when he's in a building, he can pull them up on his phone, and it's become a really nice tool for him. So our next up is Financial Services, and we're trying to figure out how to automate the approval process versus inner-school mailing of invoices and signing, of getting that electronic. So, really moving that to become more efficient as a department. Our students, we do touch our students, or, I'm sorry, that's not it. We touch, we touch the lives of our students in the district. We issued over $78,000 worth of scholarships, so this was one that actually came in about two weeks ago, Ingrid Holter. She's attending the U.S. Naval Academy for Mechanical Engineering, what an amazing girl in our community. But she received a $2,000 Rotary Global Awareness Scholarship, so she came in and she was gracious enough for us to take a picture, but it's really great when the kids come in to see us, we appreciate that. And then, one of the other things, one of my goals this year was Hudson for You Financial Wellness, was stressing the importance of financial wellness for our staff, the importance of starting to put money away now for their retirement. We have had two presentations about Wisconsin-deferred compensation, and also understanding the Wisconsin retirement system. So these were free presentations that they came in, and we had staff have the ability to attend and then start putting away funds. We also had webinars throughout the school year, those were just a list of some of them, but our outcome, we had a 9% increase of people who are putting money away for their retirement, which I think is great, and a 70% increase in the amount that we're putting away for retirement. So I think just creating that awareness and helping people and giving them tools, that's been great, and we're going to continue that, but that has been a big focus this year. I think that's it.
Any questions for Financial Services? All right. Seeing none, we'll move along to IT, Instructional Technology. Please be sure to introduce yourself.
I'm talking to Mike. It's bad when the IT people can't make it work, right? So I'm Amanda McCarthy. I am the new Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning for Technology, replacing Jennifer Latsey. And I brought my counterpart today with me, Joe Barbie, he's our network coordinator. I refer to him as Oz, that kind of person behind the curtain that makes sure everything is working. And, yes. So, we wanted to start with our students. We actually have a pretty direct role in supporting our students. Over the course of the school year, we have some places where students can directly be served by our techs. And over the course of this year, we processed 1,423 devices, 612, that were in need of repair. So, some of that might be devices that were broken, the software failed, whatever the reason, but our students are issued a loaner, and then we reissue their device once that is repaired. This also was a really interesting year for us with devices, because it was the end of our Chromebook lease. So we packed up 3,300 devices for 612, and you can see the packing process in the two pictures on the left. They were returned to our leasing partner, and then we received July 1st another 3,000-plus Chromebooks for 612. And so this is the high schools redistribution. Our Chromebooks are issued directly to students, and then we organize them by advisory, and when students arrive at school on the first day, their Chromebook is ready and waiting for them. So, we have a device. If you want to see what those new Chromebooks look like, we have, this is one of the brand-new ones that just came into the district in July. So another way we serve our students is through partnerships with other departments around the school district. We partner with our Student Services team, and we employ some of our transition students. So our 18-plus students work in our office, we have a minimum of three students in our office every single day, working as part of our IT team. They do an assortment of tasks, they are a part of our phishing campaign, and so when our staff click the fish hook, you've all had that opportunity, they click the fish hook, we send them a Swedish fish, and it's our IT students who are pulling those reports, sending out those fish, organizing them by building. They also do updates to our devices, they reissue devices and get them into our system, and just other tasks that need to happen around our department, and they really are a critical piece to the work that we do in IT. We also have partnered with Teaching and Learning to ensure that our students have the resources that they need through a process called rostering. So rostering really accomplishes two tasks. One, it ensures our fiscal responsibility. When we purchase curriculum materials, we pay for licenses, and as the world is moving more digitally, those licenses and the licensing process is becoming a little more complicated. And so, we roster our content for kids to ensure that the right students are getting the right content. And then we also have an approval process that we work through, and so this year, we only had 10 different apps that were requested for approval, and we make decisions based on safety and security of kids and alignment to curriculum. And so through that collaboration with Teaching and Learning, we ensure that we have safe apps that our students are accessing, and we're also protecting their personally identifiable information from the outside world. The other thing we do is ensure that our students are safe with our filtering, and so the image on the right shows what we're able to see on the backside. And so we are able to see the top websites kids are accessing, the top clicks they're making, and then we can support the learning behind, ensuring that they get to the right places.
And continuing on with some of the things we've done, so going back to the transition students with the laptops and all that. So this year, we deployed new laptops to all of our elementary school teachers, and we've done the final year of putting in the interactive display, so like this Epson here, but it's on the board, so you can actually draw on the board and it records that and all. That includes about 168 projectors and interactive boards in the K-12 classrooms. We've replaced 360 Chromebooks in just the elementaries. Yeah, there's a whole lot here. What have we got here? So we have a team of four techs distributed across the various education buildings, and one of them also helps here at the ASC as well. Including Amanda and myself, and our occasional itinerant, Ryan DeLaCroix, we have about, what, 10 people?
We claim him on our team.
Yeah, we occasionally claim him, because he does a lot of the same, similar stuff to what we're doing. We've also updated a number of our servers for security, to keep them up to date, protecting. We've added tools for endpoint detection, so the laptops, if something somehow gets onto the laptop, the software catches it, blocks it, lets us know about it. We work with one of our vendors to get that in and figure out what's going on. What else we got? We've, trying to go through here, we have a number of tickets, IT tickets and infrastructure upgrades, so our access points, we're working on updating them to the latest, the switches that they connect to, so the network equipment, that's the most recent versions that we can get, and of course, that's the hardware as well as software as we're able to. So one of the big things we did was, we had a number of different vendors come in and do a scan on our network to tell us, here's things where you can improve your security. So an average number for an organization might be 985, it's a number to compare with. Our initial was 919, we are now down to 472 with just the, some of the suggestions that they've given to us, and we're continuing to do that. The phishing campaigns that she was talking about, we're, oh, we're on...
I'll move to it, Tim?
Yeah. One more? There we go. So, we're doing really good with our phishing. We went up a little bit in our last campaign, but expect that that usually come back down once people get back into work. You know, you're not at work, and if you're checking email, it gets out of your mind a little bit. We've also done some work on emergency paging, allowing staff to, if there's, yes?
I'm just looking at you. Just watching you.
If there is, I'm trying to think the right term, I think it's safe to say in this instance, an incident, then any teacher can page a lockdown on the building, and then we work our way through the process for that. Yep, there we go.
Okay. This is one of my favorite upgrades. We made a significant investment this spring in our cameras. So you can see two different images of Holton. The image at the top is our old analog camera system, it was a four-view, four-lens view. You can see one of them is absent, and one of them is not helpful. Right? I was trying to get these screenshots for you, and I could see in one of the pictures that there was a person standing in that far-left picture, but you couldn't see him. You couldn't tell who it was. So the purpose of the cameras in place were not helpful in their analog state. So we replaced 22 cameras, the bottom picture is the current view of Holton, it's a 180-degree digital camera. At this point, we still have two cameras within the school district that are analog. We also did some storage upgrades. The majority of our cameras lived on servers, and we started the process of transitioning to a, basically, it's a storage recorder. And so, as you know, over the course of time, we didn't, in the past, we didn't need as much storage for video, and as video has gotten more progressive, it's become also larger. And so the storage we had was inadequate for the storage we needed, given the amount of video that is being recorded on a daily basis. And so we will continue to make camera upgrades, and it is really an ongoing process, but this is, I think, a great thing that happened for us this spring. Our team also had a couple of big updates. One of them, we replaced every printer and copier within the school district this spring. It was... the school district this spring. It was a great opportunity for a fiscal move and a speed move. And so it was the end of our lease, but our devices right now are faster than they were prior. And also, I would say more fiscally responsible. If you've been a copy machine user, which I'm sure you all have, when the toner gets low, people take out the toner and they shake it and put it back in. Every time that happens, it messes with the device. And so these new devices actually lock the toner in, and it stays there until the toner cartridge is completely empty. So we won't be spending more money than we need to on toner and resources for those copiers. The other thing that happened this spring is our team moved. So IT used to be located in the adjacent building, and as space became available, we moved over to the middle school. And with the ASC moving into the middle school, IT moved over to the high school. So you've got, our new office is over by Buildings and Grounds at the high school, and that has been a fun move for us and an opportunity to be more responsible with our space. Finally, we have a couple of places where we feel like the IT team has impacted the community. First, over the course of the last school year, we partnered with Tracy Havashaleen to implement Parent Square. And Parent Square is a communication device, a communication platform, and it serves a couple of really important purposes for us. You all know that a message sent isn't always a message received, but this platform allows us to look at click rates. It allows us to see how the message was delivered. Did the family prefer email? Did they prefer text? Did they actually open the message? And then also, you can see on the bottom right here, we can see what language the message was delivered in. We have more and more families that are preferring to receive messages in their native language, in a preferred language. And this platform translates from us sending it in English, it translates it to the family's preferred language. And then the family is able to direct message us in their preferred language, and it translates it back to English for our teachers. So it really has allowed a lot more fluid communication, and has allowed us to kind of standardize our communication practices. It allows us also, you can see the message at the top, to brand our district messages, so people know when messages are coming out with the raid or shield, it's a district message. Our families are reporting that they're feeling more connected and more supported. And now, as we go into year two, we're refining our practices to making sure that we are communicating the right information in the right amount at the right time. The last thing our IT team did, which was pretty fabulous, you heard these themes when we did the Community Connections events, but this idea of intergenerational connections. So Jen Lotzi launched the Senior Tech Club in the spring of, or the summer of 2023, and it has grown significantly over the course of a year. What it is, is a group of people that come together once a month, and the IT team has supported it. And we teach and learn and share about different technology topics. So on the left, you can see a couple of the things we've worked through, accessibility and convenience, how to command your phone so it does the things you want it to do. We talked about increasing text size and text-to-speech, and some of these accessibility features that are available to people who need them. And then we partner with the National Honor Society. So we have our high school students side by side with our seniors, and they're supporting the senior as they're actually making the changes to their device. Or the day we did ChatGPT, we had all of our seniors on Chromebooks, and our National Honor Society students were coaching them through, like, let's find a recipe. If you have celery and kohlrabi and spinach, what do you do with it? And ChatGPT made them a recipe. And so we're continuing to work through some of the things. Often, our topics are related to things that they're asking about. How do I change my security settings in Facebook, things like that, just to make sure that they're safe. This year, we're actually transitioning to community ed, and so we're still offering it. It's still free. It's the same group of people, but we're using our community resources to be able to manage that. So those are a few things that we've done this year in IT.
Thank you for the report. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. President.
Molly.
I love it when people come in, well, everybody, when they come in and talk about all the things they're doing, because it always reminds me, like, you have such a wide variety of things that you're doing. And it is, you know, your team, the students, and the community. And you answer all the questions I had when I was looking at the report. And I feel like we need tech support for maybe middle-aged people, too. Because my kids are gone at school, and sometimes I'm like, I can't turn the TV on in the basement because it's hooked up to an Xbox. So if you could work on that, that would be super.
Yeah, we can ask school board support for sure.
Thank you. I would come there. So I appreciate, I know you guys work really hard, and just, it's amazing what you do. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Louise, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Welcome to your role. All right. Next up, then, we have a three-in-one report from Tracy.
Yes.
And Trace, I'll let you decide which one you want to go first between School Age Care, Community Education, and Community Relations.
I'll start with Community Relations and just give a quick thank you to Amanda and Joe before they leave. Because of their work, we were able to actually get Parent Square off the ground to start the school year last year. So kudos to the IT team, especially Joe, in getting that done. It has been really a positive impact for our families overall, but in particular, our English-language learner families, that they are able to communicate directly with their principals, with their teachers, without barriers. So really good feedback. And we'll continue to work on, as Amanda said, how do we best use this tool to continue to communicate well with our families. Moving on, then, we also started a new way to connect with families last year, and that was through podcasting. You can find our podcasts on Spotify and all the other places where you listen to your favorite podcasts. We started the podcasts with Parenting with Pride. The Parenting with Pride Willow team, who did 11 podcasts about parenting from, you know, starting your 4K student to how do I parent that middle-school-age child. So we had a great time doing 11 series and look to continue to do that. We also did two podcasts in Spanish for families, introducing them to the district and helping them understand, you know, how things operate in the district, which we typically assume or understand, but not families new to, not all families new to the district, especially in a second language. We also created a Cyber Security 101 podcast for families and community members. Regarding school safety, this past year, we focused on family reunification following a, an event at the school. Maybe it's a power outage or something that we would need to do reunification at the school, but also at another location if it was a larger incident. We did a lot to promote Speak Up, Speak Out, or SUSO, which is a statewide 24/7 tip line for reporting school violence or threats of school violence, for bullying, other concerns, suicide. So we continue to promote that to our students and our families. And after all of those conversations, we felt that it was important to reconnect with our emergency responders. So we did draw on the expertise from the state and county emergency management staff to do a tabletop exercise with our leadership team and with emergency responders. So law enforcement, dispatch, and fire, and looking at where we can improve on our connection and communication with those responders. And then we ended the school year on hosting an Office of School Safety Behavior Threat Assessment training, and we did that in coordination with CISA. So we had almost all of our lead members participate. We had some additional certified staff and support staff who also participated in that. Regarding our team, supporting the work of different departments and schools is a large part of my daily responsibilities. And for the past several years, we've focused a lot on staffing and trying to find new ways to promote what is available to, in regard to staffing. We added LinkedIn as a platform this year also to share that information. And then I also want to highlight the work that our school administrative assistants do with regard to, I'm still on, yep. They help to keep everything going on Parent Square and our website, and they're really our social media rock stars. They provide the information so that we can continue to push things out to our community, seeing is believing. And when we can share those visual images of what's going on in our classroom, they help make our marketing story happen easy for us. Our community, as you're aware, we had the community conversation this past spring. I helped support the design team in creating the documents that they wanted for that event. Aside from that, one of our district goals was to improve connections with families and communities. We set a baseline goal of 4,000 participants in school events excluding athletics and concerts. We hit it out of the park. We, we had nearly 1,200, 500, 12,500 participants in school district, school-sponsored activities this past year. Marketing's been a theme of many of our conversations. Our quarterly community newsletters help us share the happenings in the district. Facebook continues to be our largest social media platform for getting information out, and we increased our followers by 13% this past year. And then at the bottom is just some of the materials that I help develop and design for departments and schools, just to help us keep our brand on point and having things look professional. Moving on to community education, with regard to our students, we had 713 children and youth participate in over 230 classes this past school year. Over the past several years, our student participation has declined slightly, not surprising. Enrollments have declined slightly. That said, we've had a fabulous response to our family events. So the Mother-Son Night of Fun was new last year. Didn't know what kind of participation we would get in that, but starting out at 500-plus is huge. Our Daddy-Daughter Dance has grown each year. Moving it to the high school has helped us serve those families in a more efficient way and allow them to participate in all of the activities. Community Ed also serves as a facilitator for connecting students with tutors. We placed, we place students at all grade levels, and last year, we were able to place 43 students with 18 tutors. Regarding our staff, I know we don't typically think of our community ed instructors as staff, but the, we do have 85 community ed instructors that we are working with, and they offer over 400 classes annually. Community Ed also looks for ways to support our sports teams and to maximize their fundraising efforts. So for example, this summer, the gymnastics team offered a camp through Community Ed, and the earnings from that camp go in, directly into their student activity account. This is a great partnership for the teams to show their leadership, but also to connect with those young learners. Regarding our community and community ed, we offered our first Puzzle Palooza, and you'll all want to sign up quickly because this one filled up really quick. We had 15 teams of four, and we anticipate it to be another big event. It's, it's a nice event for wintertime, so it's a competition. Everybody gets a 500-piece, the same 500-piece puzzle, and whoever gets it done, we had chamber bucks for the winners. Other things that we are offering, with our seniors in particular, we've offered a variety of theater outings and travel experiences. So last spring, New Glarus was the destination. This fall, it is Dubuque, and Galena is the destination. They really like it when we offer trips to the Orpheum or to Chan-Hassen, and we try to do that as frequently as we can. As Amanda said, we'll continue to support the Senior Tech Club and offering other cybersecurity classes for seniors. Overall, we had over 1,000 adult participants in over 170 classes. And here, I'd like to extend a thank you to Bev Hagan. She's the staff person who oversees community ed and keeps everything running smoothly. And then finally, School Age Care. The number of children attending School Age Care has steadily increased since COVID. Our greatest leap was this summer with a 32% increase over the previous summer. This year, the School Age Care team emphasized the importance of child and family connections, and each school site developed a system to ensure all children received a shout-out or a check-in on a monthly basis. Regarding the School Age Care team, staffing continues to be a challenge in School Age Care. Coordinator Michelle Hagan implemented a 30, 60, and 90-day check-in for all new staff to help improve the onboarding process. She also started a monthly Employee of the Month recognition where staff nominated each other. Winners received supplies that they could, their favorite supplies for their site. So if there were specific things they wanted, that was part of their, their winning. As far as our community in School Age Care, as I stated earlier, School Age Care placed an emphasis on child and family connections. Each school site hosted a family fun night with activities and pizza. Each year, School Age Care sends out an evaluation at the end of the school year and at the end of summer. We have consistently high marks from our families, and you've got two points here. 95% of families agree or strongly agree that School Age Care is a good value, and 97% of families agree or strongly agree that School Age Care provides a safe and engaging environment for children. I'd like to thank Michelle Hagan and the School Age Care team for being that smile that children have every morning when they come into school at 6:00 AM, some of them, and at the end of their day at 6:00 PM for some of them. Thank you.
Any questions for Tracy on any of those three reports?
Do you want me to go first? Do you have a question? Okay. Sorry, of course I have a question. I just, again, the breadth of what people do is amazing, what you do for a community. It's not just our kids, it's the community. And I just have to point out, if people can't tell, in the picture with our students for School Age Care, there's a little girl holding a tarantula. And I guarantee, I wouldn't have forgotten that. So what other time do you have an opportunity to hold a tarantula? So pretty cool stuff. Thank you.
And it lived through the process. That's always, that's a plus.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you, Tracy, for all that you and your team do. And I think it's, like, it still hasn't even fully settled into my mind yet, that you don't have to hop online the minute School Age Care opens up and hope, fingers crossed, that it doesn't crash while everybody is trying. I mean, that is the experience of so many people I know in so many other school districts, that if you don't sign up that day at the right moment, you don't get a spot. And then you're scrambling to figure out, how are you supposed to work, and what are your kids going to do before and after school? But the work you all put in to make sure that you can accommodate families so that it's not so stressful, and so that parents don't have to take time off to sign up the day of, is, it's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I hear many, many good comments about our programming, and so thanks to you, Tracy, and the staff involved. It's just a very, a very good report, and I think something to be very proud of. And just keep it up, good stuff.
Thank you.
Very good. Looks like we have all the comments. So last but not least, the final report. We turn to our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Grambo.
Thank you very much. So yeah, it's been an eventful year in teaching and learning. First thing I want to do is recognize some new team members. Change always presents opportunity, and we've had a lot of opportunity, a lot of change in teaching and learning. So this is the new team, starting from left to right. Sarah Engstrom-Wide, Virtual School Coordinator. She's continuing in that role, does an amazing job. She's a great leader. Not only does she work to create a great learning experience for students that are taking virtual courses, she's also a big part of the reason we turned our open enrollment trend around and now our net positives. Great leader. Next in that picture is Melissa Miller, who is our new District Assessment Coordinator. She actually took over for Amanda McCarthy, who was in that role previously. She actually took over for Amanda McCarthy, who was in that role previously. Melissa was previously an EL teacher and is also a great leader. She's jumped right in. She's learning so much. Great work ethic and very service-minded. Next, we have Amanda McCarthy. I don't even need to say anything because you heard all the amazing stuff she did. Just a point of clarification. She's been doing that job for a couple of months and she's an expert. The way she's learned and picked up in the world of, in obviously complicated world of IT, done an outstanding job. She's one of the hardest-working people I've ever worked with. She is outstanding. And last but not least, Laura Menarchek is the Assistant Director for Teaching and Learning Focused on Curriculum. You're going to hear a lot of stuff in this report about new and improved initiatives. She's taken that charge and done a great job of leading it. She's been leading professional development all summer long and really understands good quality teaching and learning. So feel very fortunate to work with such a professional team. There's a lot of pictures of student experiences. Teaching and learning ultimately is about creating great learning experiences for kids. And what we know is if we trust our curriculum improvement process, trust that we make the right decisions in selecting and designing the best, high-quality learning resources, and then trust our teachers to provide the personalized instruction that they're trained to do, good things happen for kids. We have a lot of changes and new and improved initiatives. So if we go to the next slide, we'll just go through a couple of them. The first three are directly linked to really specific and focused goals that we've had as a district. The first one, from Phonics to Reading in grades K-2. So a phonics-based instruction, you're going to see some results in just a little bit that in large part are due to a really strong implementation of that program. Into Math at the Middle School, a new math curricular resource at the middle school that's also yielding great results, thanks to the teachers doing an amazing job. This next one, I've mentioned it before, but it's worth repeating. I'm so proud of all of our elementary teachers and actually several secondary teachers that just took this on voluntarily, Letters Training. Letters is the gold standard for science of reading, professional learning. We have all of our elementary teachers trained. That is no small feat. I'm so proud of the way they've taken that on. I've talked to leaders throughout the state and we should be very, very proud that they've taken that on. And they've done it not because they were told to. They, what they want to do is, they want to make sure they're doing everything they can to help all kids learn and they've taken it on wonderfully. I'll go a little more quickly through the rest. Into Literature, we're piloting that full implementation next year. That's a secondary English Language Arts curriculum. Be the first time, actually, for as long as I've been in the district, and it's been a while, that we have a structured ELA curriculum at the secondary level that will be very easy, I shouldn't say easy, easier for teachers to follow and implement and focus on instruction as opposed to always designing curriculum. Really excited about that. We finalized our Human Growth and Development Plan. We'll be bringing that to the board in the next couple of months. Over 250 students taking classes in the Hudson Virtual Academy. That's from students that are taking one class to students that are fully virtual, taking all their classes online. This next one is interesting. Over 1,100 individual sessions of tutoring with tutor.com. We partner with tutor.com. They're a great company. What they do is they provide online tutoring services for any high school student. And it's all virtual, it's very safe, and it's all on-demand. So if you have a student that's in AP Calc and you haven't done that in a while or ever, and they need some help, they can just go right on and they're working with a licensed teacher that can provide help at home. It is a great resource. Along with that, they get, not free, I mean, obviously we pay for it, but all juniors can have multiple sessions of ACT preparation, which is a great value for our students. So excited about that. We've been working on our Academic Career Plan. We've been talking about that a little bit. Great experience this year when the middle school and high school partnered for their Academic Career Plan Night as part of the freshman orientation, had over 80% participation in that, which we were very pleased with. And then finally, enhanced curricular transparency with the completion of our Embark Project. Embark is the online portal where anyone in the community can log on and see exactly what it is we teach in each of our classes. That's obviously an ongoing thing, but it took a while to backfill and get everything done up to date and then now we move forward as we implement new. And then real quickly, going into next year, implementing CKLA, which is Core Knowledge Language Arts, which is a science of reading-based elementary literacy curriculum. Actually, all of our third through fifth grade teachers were training on that today. So excited about that. We'll be launching our Welding Academy. We partner with Northwood Tech. High school students can leave high school as certified welders. It's a great, great program. They earn credit in high school and Northwood Tech concurrently and we know we have a great welding teacher. We know that that program is going to grow very quickly. New Algebra Program and then the full implementation of Into Literature and then some more work with Academic Career Planning and then wanted, also mentioned, six brand-new electives at the high school that are getting a lot of positive attention. All right. One more thing on our students. I mentioned two focus areas that we had. One was improving results, achievement in middle school math, and the other was early literacy. So we implemented from Phonics to Reading. Our teachers did a great job with that. K-2 teachers, that graph on the right, FWS is Fall/Winter/Spring, three screening periods. The purple bars on the top represent growth and achievement in those three screening periods. Worth noting that the bar goes up from Fall/Winter to Spring. It's not the same bar. So when you see those numbers climb, that means even more kids are reading at the levels that we'd like to see. So very happy with that. Down below, you'll see the results of four years of proficiency trend data with middle school math. Definitely trending in the right direction. Middle school math teachers have done an outstanding job of embracing a lot of change. Couldn't be more proud of their work. So we also know that staff needs to be fed. They need their professional learning to stay sharp and to know what it is that is around the corner and to have all their skills developed. That image on the top, big thanks to Tracy. She actually developed that image. We worked with our rigor teamwork inclusion group to create what we call our System for Learning. It defines curriculum, instruction, learning environment, family engagement, and a few different areas that we say, what, what is it that we believe? What are our guiding principles and what are our core practices? So if you have a student in the Hudson School District, you know this is what they believe about curriculum. We've created a nice document that will be used both for recruiting purposes, for training purposes, and really for clarity. You've heard me talk a lot about clarity and consistency and this is one more step in that direction. A lot of other facts there about professional learning that's actually starting just around the corner. It's unbelievable this time of the year. We have new teachers coming soon and a lot of very specific professional learning and you can see the numbers there, but in interest of time, we'll skip over that. And then finally, our school community. The first set of bullet points there is related to our Teaching and Learning Advisory Council, a couple of members in the audience. So thank you, Teaching and Learning Advisory Council members. That's a team that helps us understand the perspectives of what does our school experience look like, what it looked like when it translates to home. So what is the student experience at home? And the family members that are part of that council provide advice. They get, they, they receive some training, but then they provide feedback for us. So we know how our programs are being experienced at home. Those are a couple of topics. We've updated them. Whenever there's new curriculum, we always get their input. They get to go through the curricular resources, take a look, provide some feedback. And we spent a lot of time on family engagement expectations and clarifying those expectations. So when we talk about the personal proactive communication, they've provided input on how that's going. So really appreciate all their work. We're going to be kicking that up in just about a month. We'll get that team back together. And then on the staff side, we have our Family Engagement Committee. That's a group of staff members that helps design, what does it look like to truly engage our families? So that first thing is clarifying expectations for positive proactive personal family communication. That's all students getting calls from teachers at school, or all, not kids, all families getting calls from teachers, talking about how the year is starting and getting to know the child and the family. So there's open lines of communication. That team also created a rubric for high-quality family engagement. So when we say, this is what we mean when we say we engage families, we have a rubric to gauge and measure those results. And when we design different experiences, we use that rubric. And now we've had experience designed at all levels, 4K through 12, using that rubric and a lot of very well-attended and meaningful family engagement opportunities. Questions?
Mr. President?
Rob.
So the tutor.com, sounds fantastic. How is that marketed or communicated to the students of what opportunities there are for tutoring, especially around the ACT prep?
So during advisory, they all log in and see how to continue the ACT prep. So they do a little bit in advisory and then they can continue that at home. And then there's also some structured time throughout advisory where they get in. That, that's just specifically for juniors, but most of the marketing is through advisory.
Okay. So are freshmen, for instance, aware that that tutoring opportunity exists?
So last year was the first year that we did it, 912. The first year we just partnered with for juniors. And then we changed the model. So it used to be, you'd pay for unlimited tutoring for one class. We took that same amount of money and then bought a block of hours. And then yes, it was marketed to all.
And it's free for all students?
Free for all students.
Yes, Kate.
I have two questions for you. The Embark?
Yes.
So course teaching and curriculum transparency, how would parents go about finding it?
So right on the webpage, if you go to the curriculum tab, it's right there, on the school district webpage, yep. Yep. And you go under the Teaching and Learning tab and then curriculum and it's right there.
And it's active now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, awesome. And then the welding program, I think, is amazing. How do you decide, you know, between electrician and welding and different programs? What, how do you decide what comes first?
Sure. The, the greatest demand right now has been in welding and Northwood Tech actually developed a program that we partnered. So we didn't create the program, they developed it, looked for partners. We were early adopters in that partnership. But you're exactly right. There's other opportunities for internships and we'll definitely continue to expand those.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Otherwise, Dave, thanks for the report. I like how it was organized. I like to see definitely the bars and the graphs showing improvement year over year and the emphasis being on students, on what, the 60% of this is the learning part, but then, you know, the teaching doesn't need to be taken for granted either and that it's not all about just hiring great people, which is very important and we do a good job of that, but it's being able to retain them and then make them even better. And that professional development, I think, is also a way to attract teachers. They want to know they're going to have supports when they come here. And so I like the improvements that we're making in that way.
Sorry, I have one more thing to say. I want to give a huge shout-out to the math department at the middle school. I know that's been a struggle. It's been a struggle when my kids were in middle school. And so those numbers are amazing and I hope that those teachers are feeling some pride with that.
I think they are. Thank you.
Thanks for that comment, Kate. All right. Dave, thanks for your report. I think that concludes our reports. Now we're ready to go into the action portion of the meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda along with the language regarding expenditures that's on the board.
Mr. President?
Rob.
Move approval of the consent items and that the Chief Financial and Operations Officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,543,023.07.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second. Right. Bob, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda and the expenditures are approved. Next up on our agenda is consideration, action upon resolution regarding the revenue cap, exceeding that commencing with the '24-'25 school year. That's another way of saying we're going to put a resolution on the ballot and the date selected. This is the date only. So you'll notice that while there's an amount, but...
This is, it's actually the other way around. So this would be to exceed the revenue limit first and then the...
Okay.
Right? We have, and then the date, the referendum election question would be C. So B would be to exceed the revenue cap and there are two, two resolutions here, one for five and one for six, because that's what you asked us to prepare, so that you guys can have a discussion and decide which one you want to do. And then once, once that is determined, then the second one is, then you set the actual date.
Well, the date's in the resolution, this resolution.
Yep.
But it's just, it's about the specific notice requirements.
Correct, yeah.
Is the second one, so.
Yep.
But the first, so this has been discussed for quite a long time, basically since we had the last operational referendum that was for eight million that didn't, was not approved. You know, we took a post-referendum survey based on the responses, which we had very good response.
Yep.
Every time we, we do these surveys, I mean, we're told by school perceptions, we have great responses.
Yep.
And certainly enough to at least make the results valid and the results in that survey indicated that if we came back with something that was in the five to six million range, that it would have a very good chance of passing. So that's why we have, right now before us, a $5 million amount. I mean, this is, again, a proposed resolution. If there's a different amount than the five million, that could be discussed here, but we've been discussing it and the trend in the discussions, I would say, over the last three work sessions has been to try and go for what will get us far enough out so that we don't have to come back in two years, but something that is not going to, you know, that we have a potential, if we can stabilize the enrollment and not see the drastic drops in the state aid, that this might be able to hold us for eight to 10 years. That's the hope.
And we, we do have some presentations that have been shared previously and then also reshared tonight, or today with the board, but these have been available before. From Barrett Financial, just talking a little bit about what's put us in this, where we're at in this situation. We're not unique as to how this is, how this is operating. You can see in 2024, at least, at least 100 of the school districts in the state are receiving at least 10% of the revenue by a non-recurring operating referendum, which is a real, real challenge across the state. You can see all the districts who have passed operational referendums since 1992. It is the vast, it is the vast majority of school districts. It's because state funding has not kept up with inflation as we continue to go through these slides and Bonnie, jump in at any point. Districts who have asked an operational question since 1990, to give you a little bit of history, you can see all the, all the different districts that have asked an operational question and what the, what the passage rate has been since 1990 to 2024. The districts in 2024, or the blue ones, you know, most, most recent ones, I think those are the ones that are going onto the ballot. Is that right, Bonnie? So they're not all listed as of yet because the resolutions don't have to be made until no later than August 27th, I believe. So if you go to the next slide. So as this, as this item shows, the revenue limit adjustment per pupil under, if you look at inflation versus essentially where we've been, where we've been sitting back in 2000, was it 2010, 2013, somewhere around there, they, they took the revenue cap or the revenue increases and they decoupled them from inflation. When they decoupled them from inflation, so what essentially happened is there started to become a gap as of right now from 2013 to now. That difference is about $2,300 per pupil. So if you were to take that times our number of students in our district, you're talking about a difference of about $10 million in funding, just, just from the state alone. And so what's happened is over time, the state has forced school districts to put more money back on property taxpayers. And because the Hudson School District has growth in property values, it penalizes us double. So we get penalized because the state's not funding their portion. And then on top of that, because our values are going up, the state is saying, oh, you must have a very affluent district. They can afford to pay more in property taxes, so we're going to cut your state aid and you just need to put it back on property tax owners. Just to give you a little bit of an idea, we're now two-thirds property tax funded, about one-third state aid. When we got here 10 years ago, we were two-thirds state aid and one-third property tax funded. So you can see that, you know, we're kind of a...
So it's a, it's a triple whammy, so to speak, with the fear to have the state aid tied to inflation and then the fact that our district is affluent and we have, we're property-rich, so the state penalizes us for being in that situation.
Correct.
And then on top of that, then we've had decreased enrollment. So we lose on per capita state aid as well.
We're, we're kind of hitting a perfect storm as we work through this. If you keep going through, Tim. Um, you can kind of see, uh, the, um, different types of referendum, recurring, non-recurring debt referendums. You know, debt referendums is something that we passed, uh, a year ago. That was to fix buildings, those are primarily for construction projects, things along those lines. Um, the operating, you have reoccurring and non-reoccurring. Uh, a non-reoccurring would have a sunset on it, you know, basically so many years you could ask for the money. Um, and then you have to re-ask, you know, one of the challenge, and then you have reoccurring where you raise the, uh, the new revenue limit for the school district. Um, the challenge with non-reoccurring is when you're using it to pay for reoccurring expenses, it creates a, uh, real high stakes game down the road, uh, that, you know, should it not get renewed, uh, could have a drastic impact on the district. You know, typically, non-reoccurring referendums would be if you're going to facili-, uh, fund a five-year, 10-year facility plan and you want so much a year for five years or 10 years to fix buildings, things like that. They're one-time costs, but they're over a series of years is a good, good way to do non-reoccurring. Uh, reoccurring more along the lines of when we're, we're looking at reoccurring expenses type of thing. If you go to the next item. So you start to see, okay, why are we in the position we're in? Um, this is really hard numbers to see, I know up on the board, especially for people in the crowd, so we'll try to do our best to kind of work through it. But essentially, you know, we started looking at, um, the, uh, perfect storm. We do have some declining enrollment, uh, and then the lack of funding from the state. Uh, but yet inflation going up and, and expenses going up, which creates some real challenges for us. Um, so this is the no reoccurring referendum snapshot. What would happen over the next five years if we chose to do, if we chose to do nothing? Now, one of the things I want to remind people is when the last attempt at a reoccurring referendum, a year and a half ago failed, what we heard from people was you got to cut, you can't just ask for more money. You got to cut first, try to, you know, sell some of your properties, do some of those things and then come back and ask us for a smaller amount. And so that was the feedback we got. So since then, um, this building is up for sale. We've had several showings, we're hoping to get this, this building sold and we're going to move into the middle school. Uh, so we have one, one less facility. The UU property, um, it's a property between, uh, Highway twelve and Carmichael. You see a sign there for the school district that was put up for sale, that has a sale pending. Um, we did get an offer and it's just contingent on an annexation, uh, plan. And they're working through that right now, uh, to try to get that off the books, because that's what people asked us to do, to get that property off the books as well. Uh, and then on top of that, we've cut about one point nine million in staffing over the last, uh, year and a half. And so to try to reduce expenditures that way. But when eighty-five percent, eighty, eighty-five percent of your budget is staffing, because we're in the people business, you end up, uh, you, you can't make large cuts to your budget without cutting staffing. Um, and so we, we've worked on that. So we've, we've done those things, but now if we don't get any help on the revenue side, you can start to see, um, you know, we project a deficit spend, uh, in the, in the coming years. And, and so, um, we end up starting to spend down our fund balance. And people often say, well, why do you have all this money saved? Why don't you just spend that first and then come back and ask? Well, uh, for a couple of reasons. One, uh, by having a, a healthy fund balance, we have to keep roughly about three months' worth of operating expenses on hand at any given time. Because if we don't, uh, we end up in a cash flow issue where we can't make payroll. Because we don't get, we don't get revenue on like a monthly basis like you would a paycheck. And so we have to have at least three months' worth of, of cash on hand so that we don't have to do short-term borrowing. Then we have to pay interest on that money and things along those lines. So we have to keep always about three months' worth. So on a roughly eighty million dollar, uh, seventy-five million dollar budget, um, you know, we need to keep about twenty to twenty-two million dollars on hand just to, just to handle our operating expenses at any given time. On top of that, by, uh, having, uh, a, a good balance in our fu- fund balance or our savings account, it lowers our borrowing costs when we have to borrow for facility projects. We have the second highest bond rating you can have, we have a double A plus bond rating. There are only six municipalities in the state, we were told, that have that rating. Uh, there's only two, um, uh, municipalities that have a triple A rating. So we are, uh, a very, very high bond rating and that has to do with the financial condition of our district and, and how we manage these things. And so a lot of times people will look at fund balance and say, well, spend that down to nothing and then once you get down to nothing, then ask for more money. That, that creates a real problem. It ends up costing taxpayers more money because we end up having to borrow money and pay interest just to, just to operate as a school district. Um, if you look at, if you look at what we've been doing over the last couple of years, we've been prepaying our debt down as well. I want to draw attention to that. Um, so we've, we've borrowed money both for the high school, middle school project in two thousand sixteen and then we borrowed money, uh, again, last year, uh, for the projects that are, are starting right now this fall. Um, and, uh, we are prepaying that down, so bonds that we can pay off early, so we can eliminate interest payments and things like that. Uh, we're paying those down. And so we've, we've built in the ability to prepay some of our debt so that if we do have to go for an increase in operational expenses, we can back off some of that prepayment and not have this massive impact to taxpayers. Where all of a sudden their taxes are going to go, uh, going to spike way up. Uh, and so we've been trying to, try to manage that, to try to keep our, our property taxes a little bit more stable than what they've been, been in the past. Um, if you look at, if you look at this sheet up here, if we do nothing, um, and we continue to lose about fifty students a year. And remember, this is one thing I want to highlight because, uh, for those watching at home is, um, we're not losing kids from a standpoint of people are coming. They don't like what we do and then they leave. It's more of, we are graduating classes of, last year's graduating class was almost four hundred and fifty and our incoming kindergarten class is three hundred. Our capture rate is the same capture rate it was ten, twelve, fifteen years ago. And the capture rate is we're required by law to account for every school-aged child within our attendance boundaries. And so that is, that doesn't matter if they're homeschooled, doesn't matter if they go to procheo schools, private schools, they go out of state, but live in our, in our boundaries, or they go to our school, or they open enroll to another school district. We're required to account for every child. And we look at that capture rate and we are capturing within one percent of the same amount of kids, uh, we were percentage-wise as we were ten, twelve years ago. So this idea that, that people are leaving Hudson to go, these other options is not necessarily accurate. What it is, is there are fewer school-aged kids that live within our boundaries. Um, and it's evident across, across the board, uh, when you, when you look at that. And we shared that data a year ago, uh, or actually the spring we shared that data, where we're capturing the same percentage. However, there's just fewer school-aged kids. And so, um, we also are not having the same amount of move-ins that we used to have. We used to call it in-migration with families. So that would be families that had kindergarten or, or first grade through twelfth graders, so they come after they start kindergarten. That was a big push, uh, in the district as far as pushed our enrollment up. Uh, and, and that in-migration has not been happening either. And so all of those things are creating a perfect storm for us, which creates some real challenges as it relates to the budget and, and pressure on it. Uh, as you can see up here in this document, um, if we do nothing over the course of the next essentially five years, we will have spent through about twenty-one million dollars worth of fund balance, um, through, through deficit spending. Um, because we, there are certain assumptions that we have to make here, that's still declining enrollment of about fifty students a year. That's, um, you know, knowing that our, uh, you know, benefits and, and, um, our cost for employment is going to continue to, you know, try to keep pace somewhat with inflation. Um, but health insurance isn't getting any cheaper, as everybody knows, things along those lines. Um, and products that we need to, to, for, to deliver instructions not getting any easier. So when you look at the next slide, I believe, uh, this is what it looks like with the five million dollar reoccurring operating referendum. Uh, we still, uh, managed to, uh, operate in the black for, for a few years and then it starts to go red. But one of the things that we would, we would do, whether it's on the no referendum side or the five or the six million is if we continue to drop students, lose fifty students a year, we're going to continue to make adjustments to staffing. We're going to have to continue to make adjustments to staffing. Because as we have fewer sta- students, we have to have fewer staff. Um, we're going to have to continue to have the conversation about the number of buildings that we own in this district and do we continue to need all of the buildings that we have in this district? Um, and so, you know, there's, although it does show at five million dollar reoccurring, it does show a starting to go red five years out. Pretty confident that we can continue to make adjustments to staffing levels if we continue to lose students, that we could, we could keep it in the black at least, you know, five years out as we, as we look at it. Um, and then the next, uh, reoccurring referendum scenario would be if we went to a six million dollar reoccurring, essentially just an extra million dollars a year. Um, again, pretty confident the same, same assumptions hold, that we could make reductions to keep us in the black with those additional, with those additional revenue. Um, it's, we're, it's not unique to Hudson, like I said. Uh, I believe, do we have the other presentation, Tim, that has, um, St. Croix County? That it was like a four-slide document? Um, somebody at the work session, I believe, the board member asked, um, about what is, you know, what does it look like, uh, in St. Croix County, other school districts?
Nick, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
While we're waiting for Tim, so on that spreadsheet, uh, the five million dollar one, you're showing, um, five million in school year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it, however, in the following subsequent school years, you are showing the additional revenue, but you're not showing it as reoccurring referendum dollars, just so I'm clear. We are, you are showing the five million reoccurring, it's just it's only noted in revenue, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Because it gets built into the, it gets built into the new revenue limit.
Yeah, it's just the table was a little confusing.
Yep.
People are at home, they might look at it and go.
Yep, and why isn't it in the one year and why isn't it not in any, yeah. Because it, it's going to show, that first year is going to show as additional dollars as it relates to a referendum and then after that, it just becomes a new revenue.
Yep.
Yep, absolutely.
Mr. President?
Sorry.
Just, uh, one other question. And so currently we're showing several million dollars that we're using to prepay debt, which I fully support.
Mm-hmm.
It's great to not have that, uh, future interest payment.
Mm-hmm.
In following years, assuming we're successful with the five million or the six million, it, I think we're showing, and I don't have my cheaters on, so forgive me.
Mm.
Sucks getting old.
Mm.
Um, but the prepayment of debt that appears to, with the successful passage of a rep- of an operating referendum, we're showing less payment, prepayment of that debt?
Yeah, so we're, we're making some prepayments now that we built, that we built in. Because the way it works, you, you can't just prepay anything anytime you want. Bonds are callable at certain times and so, you know, we've been planning to prepay at certain times. And so as our property valuation goes up, we'll be able to continue to do some additional prepayment of debt, but just not for the next couple of years.
Okay.
We'll feather it back in. So we are, you know, we are definitely, um, we have a very aggressive repayment schedule for our debt, probably more so than most districts. Um, because we prefer to get it paid off, so it's just less interest that the district, you know, taxpayers have to pay.
Smart.
Yep.
And that's what we've done with the high school referendum?
Yep, yep. Uh, we have a lot of callable bonds at the high school, um, which means, you know, we can prepay those earlier. Um, some are not callable, it just depends on how they're, how they're split up when, when they're sold. Megan?
Yeah, um, so from the conversations we've had, it's, it's my understanding that if we don't have, uh, operational referendum that passes, to try and cut seven and a half million by twenty, I need glasses too, twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, would have serious ramifications on class sizes, activities. Like if we had to cut that much money from the budget, it would seriously impact our kids and our schools.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the, the, that's a, it's a huge, huge chunk. So as I said, about eighty to eighty-five percent of our budget is staffing cost. And then there's about another seven to ten percent of our budget that is fixed cost. It's utilities, it's turning the lights on, it's putting, you know, transportation, gas and bus stuff like that. So when you're talking about discretionary parts of the budget that aren't related to people, you're really talking about what, five to maybe eight percent of our budget that's actually discretionary. Um, and so when you have to cut potentially ten percent of the budget, it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty substantial cut in order, in order to do those things. And it, you know, part of the ways you look at doing that is not offering the same things that we offer currently or changing the way we offer cla- you know, what our class size guidelines are, um, you know, a lot of those, those different components. So we, we do pride ourselves in what we deliver. Um, and I think the community has a high level of expectation of what they, they get for their money. Um, but yes, it, you know, it would be very difficult for us to cut seven million dollars out of our budget and not see a substantial impact on, on what kids are going to feel and what parents are going to see in our district. Yep.
And I would add that that's, that's seven million, that's each of those reds is each year. So that's not cumulative to seven million, it's each year, that's what your deficit will be. Um, the one thing I wanted to s- say is, um, for twenty-four, twenty-five, we were predicting, uh, we were going to be eight hundred thousand in deficit and we are down to five hundred thousand. So now that we've got people hired and plugged in, we've updated that. So it did change a little bit from last month, but I just wanted to point that out, that, um, our prediction, we were, it's more accurate based on the staffing that we have as of right now.
So we're, we're always looking to see how we can become more efficient, how we can do things more efficiently. You heard in several of the reports tonight, even something as simple as, you know, copy machine things and th- stuff like that. It, it allows us to be more efficient. We, we, um, we don't want to spend money if we don't, if we don't have to spend it. And we know it's a finite resource for us.
Got a quick question. Thank you. Um, so with more showing, um, decreasing numbers of students, full-time students, are we showing in our, um, spreadsheet decline in employee? I'm not asking this very well.
Nope, nope, you're absolutely.
You know what I mean, that according teachers, fewer teachers needed.
So the way, the way the projections are right now, this is showing status quo as far as expenses go. So that's why I'm pretty confident that we, if we continue to have declining enrollment, we would con- we'll continue to cut. I mean, and so, um, there's, there's no other, there's no other choice, we have to continue to cut. So we, we believe that if we continue to have this level of declining enrollment, we'll be able to get those red numbers smaller. We just can't get them to the point where, um, we can get them all the way. And some people will ask us things like, what, if you have fewer students, you should just be able to have a corresponding cut. And so an example would be if we have four sections of fourth grade at Hudson Prairie Elementary School and they all have twenty-seven students in, in each of those sections. And all of a sudden now next year, or this year, let's say, we have twenty-five kids in each of those sections in fourth grade at Hudson Prairie Elementary School. Okay, that's eight fewer kids in fourth grade. That's not enough for us to cut a fourth grade teacher at Hudson Prairie Elementary School. However, that's a hundred thousand dollar loss in revenue in that, in that fourth grade. So we don't get to, we don't have any expenses that we can just cut, but we've lost revenue. And, and so that's, that's why a lot of times what you'll see is enrollment will be kind of more of a, you know, downward trend and cuts are more like stair steps. You gotta let it go for a little bit and then you cut, and then you let it go and then you cut, um, in order to, to address, you know, some of those components.
One other question. Um, are we, do we have a three percent raise, um, for staff built into this as well? Is that an assumption we made or?
That's an assumption that we made, so that, because, you know, these are, these are conservative assumptions. So these, we don't want to say the worst-case scenarios, but we don't want all of a sudden promise that it's going to be really, really good and then come back and say, no, we can't, we can't do it. Um, so yes, so this would include, uh, three percent increases, uh, to staffing. Yep.
I think if you.
Thanks.
If you go down a few slides, it does has all the assumptions we used for it.
Keep going.
Because I think it was on the last slide.
You're going the other direction.
Mr. President.
Oh, it's not, there it, no.
Keep going, go ahead, Rob.
There it is. Thanks. So we've, so we've spent a lot of time talking about the need to have, um, competitive wages.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of time. Uh, the importance of having the strength of teaching that we have in our school district. Uh, but a question I have on behalf of those here tonight and those at home, if, because there's a lot of people that haven't participated in our conversations.
Mm-hmm.
If eighty, eighty-five percent of our budget are people costs, salaries, benefits, without the people at home knowing anything about the conversations we've had, why wouldn't we just freeze wages? What would that do to our district?
Well, uh, that's a great question, Rob. And, you know, if, if everybody in the market around us is doing that, you know, and it works, it works pretty well. But when you get behind, um, on the, on the wages, especially for our teaching staff, what happens is they leave. And then we don't have, uh, the quality staff that people have expect, uh, to be teaching their children. And so it becomes more and more difficult, uh, if you start getting be- getting behind our neighboring school districts. Uh, and, and I'm not even really even talking about the Minnesota side, I'm talking more on the Wisconsin side. The districts around us, uh, used to. The districts around us, uh, used to be, the districts around us, we were always the highest kind of paying district in the area on the Wisconsin side. And that's not necessarily the case, especially with starting salaries and things like that for, for teaching staff. And so it's becoming increasingly, increasingly more difficult, uh, to do that, and we know that there's also an additional cost. Anytime we lose a staff member and we have to rehire, there's a, there's an additional cost associated with that, the rehiring process and things along those lines. So in a world when everybody's freezing, um, it works. When, in a world when you're the only one freezing and everybody else is going up, uh, you end up having this mass exodus of staff, then it, what can end up happening is people, the district's not the, what people want, and then you start to have an exodus of students. Cause they're going, why do I, why do I wanna be here, if it's not gonna have good staff with my kids and things like that? And then it can start to become a self fulfilling prophecy, kind of a spiral. So it is a balance, because we wanna be, we wanna be responsible, but we also have to be somewhat within the market as well, and we look at that.
So every student that not lose, cause we don't lose students to your point.
Mm-hmm.
But if our graduating classes are larger than the incoming student population, our student population is less, and so that revenue is roughly, is it 12,000? Or how much is it per student?
Yeah, right, uh, 12,365, I think, somewhere around there.
Okay, and so that's another important factor too, is that, you know, we've got the people costs, and as you've said earlier, you know, we've got the student side, and if that revenue does decrease, it's another impact to all of this.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no doubt about it, I mean, and, and there's, there's a lot of headwind, I guess, to, to speak, uh, you know, as we go through this. And that's why we don't, we don't take it lightly, asking, asking the general public for an operation referendum. You know, prior to us asking, a year ago, we hadn't asked since 2001. You know, it'd been 22 years since our last, uh, referendum, we asked for an operational, our, our expenditures. Now, we've done construction referendums, don't get me wrong, but, um, so we're, we're trying to take what we think is, is somewhat of a reasonable approach. Uh, but we know that it's hard, because, you know, uh, I don't like to pay taxes anymore than anybody else, believe me, uh, but it's, you know, it's, it's a challenge, it's, the cards were dealt, and we're gonna have to figure it out some way or another.
Mr. President?
Yes, ladies.
Dr. Olet, can you speak a little bit about how we analyze the competitive set, where those districts are, and kind of how we look at those in our analysis on our negotiations with our staff?
Yep, so we have, uh, we have comparables that Andrea puts, you know, she grabs the information, uh, from other districts, we have comparable groups, uh, depending on, uh, employment category. Uh, we are in competition, whether people want to, believe it or not, we are in competition with districts on the other side of the river in Minnesota. Uh, because, uh, people can drive 15 minutes and get to other jobs. And so, uh, so I think we have, uh, five or six Minnesota school districts, we look at comparables, and five or six Wisconsin school districts, we look at comparables to see, are we keeping pace, uh, with, with those school districts? And so, uh, that's what we're constantly trying to keep, keep an eye on. We do know that in our comparable districts, um, our starting salaries are low. You know, our, on our top end, our more veteran staff, they seem to be doing all right, but on our, uh, our lower end of our salary schedule, um, there's a lot of, we need to probably apply some pressure to that, that lower end of our schedule. Um, but we're also, uh, you gotta remember, we have almost 800 employees in the school district, and of which 420 are certified staff, give or take, maybe 10 students, uh, or 10 staff members. So that means there's another 300 to 400 staff members that a lot of people don't even realize that we have, whether it be custodians, or secretaries, or food service, or, uh, administrators, or paraprofessionals, or school edge care, all of those different groups. And we are not only in competition with other school districts, for a lot of those folks, we're in competition with the private sector as well. And as everybody has seen, uh, especially, uh, with those positions, uh, there's been tremendous wage pressure. As, um, you know, a lot of hourly, a lot of hourly positions have seen large increases, and for us to be able to maintain, I think Bonnie said we are fully staffed for custodians right now, we believe right now, uh, which is like the first time in five years. Uh, we've had all of our custodial positions filled. Um, you know, we still need paraprofessionals, so if anybody is, is interested in being a paraprofessional, we still have openings for that. Um, but, uh, yeah, we, there's a, there's a lot of pressure for us, uh, to try to stay competitive in the market.
Mr. President, uh, Dr. Willett, you talked a little bit about the sort of spiral if we lose great staff, and so then students might leave. But I think the, the possible spiral too of, you know, I have friends who are leaving Minneapolis because there were gonna be 40 kids in their kid's 4th grade class, like 4th graders. Um, you know, and you just see, once you lose music, once you lose art, once you lose activities, kids will leave too, parents won't wanna move here, and then you end up in that kind of, I don't wanna say death spiral, but downward slide, um, when, when there aren't the things that families want for their kids, the type of education they want. Like, I got a 4th grader, I can barely handle one at home, I don't know how a teacher can do 40
Yeah.
in a class.
Well, and, and I think that's, you know, and that is one of the challenges, I mean, and, and we try to maintain certain class size guidelines. We try to maintain a lot of activities, you heard through the different reports tonight. Um, you know, we try to give, you know, look at things like welding academies, and AP offerings, and music and fine arts, and we've had the activities that have come and presented, and athletics, and things along those lines. Um, cause we know that all of those things help, uh, help kids, help families be connected and, and, uh, and, and move things through. But, yeah, if you start chipping away at that, it becomes a less desirable place to be. And, um, you know, and then you can start to have that self fulfilling prophecy, once kids, then you accelerate, uh, you actually do have people moving out of the district, uh, for other districts, and that creates a real challenge for us. Kate.
So I think that we have been doing a lot to try to, um, limit how much we're spending each year, or each month, each pay period. Um, I know we have talked about before, kind of, marketing open enrollment.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think that's something that we should come to a conclusion as a group, if that's something that we want to do or not. And I know we've also talked to a lot of our legislators, and we know things in government work slowly. But I think we need to be pushing that a little bit more, and I would love to see some of the lobbyists come in here that are supposed to be working to our benefit.
Yes.
And on, on our behalf, to see what they're doing to change this formula in Wisconsin. I mean, we're seeing continually Milwaukee's taking funds for schools that are not high performing.
Yes.
And we are doing amazing things at this school, and I think that we deserve for that, that pile of money to be distributed differently. So I think it, it's smart for us, and to be good stewards to our constituents, to make sure that we're talking to the lobbyists, to see what they can do.
Yep, and, and this fall, we're going to be bringing in lobbyists from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and also, um, I'm gonna try to get the School Administrator Alliance lobbyist in as well, uh, to kind of give us, lay the land, as we are getting ready to head into a, a new biennium. So it's a new budget, uh, biennium coming up here in January, uh, it's also an election year, um, lots of different things going on, and, um, but the open enrollment piece, we are, we have turned the tide on open enrollment. Uh, in 2015, we were running about a, about a half a million dollar deficit in open enrollment, somewhere around there. It meant we had about a half a million dollars going out, then coming in, uh, and now we're running, what, a, about, about $300 surplus? Uh, so, you know, it's a change of about $800,000 swing, um, as we continue to, continue to do that. We know, we knew that one of our biggest open enrollment out pieces was Wisconsin Virtual, kids that wanted a virtual option. Um, and we were losing quite a few, I think Dave went St. Croix Central Virtual School. So, uh, Dave was charged with the task of putting together our own virtual charter, and did a great job with that, and you saw, you know, almost 250 students that are taking either part-time or full-time classes through our virtual, uh, charter program. One of the things that's hard to compare us to some of these school districts, open enrollment wise, on the Minnesota side, is we are the big district around here, whereas when you hear the Minnetakers of the world say, well, a third of our enrollment comes from open enrollment in, well, they're also sitting next to two very inner city school districts of 80,000 students, where you have a lot of people trying to get out. Um, we don't have that. Most of the people, if they've moved to Roberts, or they moved to New Richmond, or they moved to Somerset, they moved there because they wanted a smaller environment for their kids, or they wanted a smaller town. It's not necessarily, um, they wanna come, you know, wanna come to Hudson, where it's just very different on the Minnesota side, because when you have two or three or four big urban districts, like I said, Anoka, Hennepin, St. Paul, and Minneapolis Public, just between those three districts, you have 115,000 students, and you have all these suburbs around them, that open enrollment draw out is, is much, is much greater. For us, all of the districts around us on the Wisconsin side, uh, are all smaller than us, and we can't, we don't get to take students from Minnesota, we don't get paid for students to come from Minnesota. So in order to, uh, if somebody lives in Stillwater, they wanna go to school in Hudson, they have to tuition in. That means they have to pay that, that full $12,365, because there's no, there's no mechanism for students from Minnesota to come, to come to Wisconsin. However, if they live in River Falls and they wanna come in, then we do get, you know, River Falls pays us, you know, type of thing. But we're gonna continue, we're continuing to get our marketing materials ready, uh, related to open enrollment. I just wanna caution the board, it won't, it won't be quite the influx that you see on the other side of River, cause we just don't have those large urban attendance centers that, for lack of a better term, you got a lot of people trying to get out, as Megan talked about, they just, they want out, so.
I just wanna echo what Kate said, cause I, I agree with that, I mean, we, we should be maximizing our efforts, understanding that there are certain limits. We're certainly not gonna cure the future shortfalls by, you know, taking students from other Wisconsin districts. But because we are the last Wisconsin district on the interstate, we have some advantages for those people who are driving to the Twin Cities to work anyway. They could be bringing their kids here to school, and so, yes.
And, uh, that just stresses the importance of our, of our wonderful staff and programming, because years ago, when we had a, a high school in poor condition, uh, we were still getting, uh, people in migration, uh, or, uh, coming in because of our programming and our staff and their reputation. So now we've got the, the building taken care of years ago, uh, if, that's why we have to be so careful with funding on this, uh, to, to keep our programming special and more than what our neighbors have.
I guess, uh, for the sake of time and everything, and, um, the board has, you know, been dealing with this really for about two years is when, in November of '22, when we had a well-attended community forum, uh, you know, we started introducing this idea, the notion of what's happening to our state aid. And, um, you know, for those three reasons that we cited before, it's been, uh, going down. And so now, uh, we've got these projections, it's tough to go further out than four, five years. Um, but maybe it, maybe some of our assumptions won't happen, and we wouldn't need to use all that money, but we do have a history. You showed it, a graph earlier saying how virtually every school district in the state has had to go to an operational referendum since the law was put into place in the late eighties. Hudson is included in that, but we have an example, as, as, uh, Dr. Olet referred to, 2001, it's roughly 23 years ago. It was 1.4 million, I wanna say, give or take, it was something in that vicinity, and it was for teacher pay and for computers. And the s, community supported it, and they used it, I think, for one or two budget cycles, and then we didn't use it for many years, because we didn't need it. Now, had we used it, then we wouldn't have needed to go to referendum, it actually would have paid for the entire remodel of the high school and the junior high, but, um, you know, that's hindsight, so now we gotta look forward on what it is that we're likely to need, and if we don't need it, could be used elsewhere. You know, whether that's paying down debt, or whether it's, um, you know, just a rainy day fund, we've got this, um, undesignated fund in a good place for, you know, the next four years or so, but if we don't do something, um, it's, it's going to disappear quickly. So, um, I want us to look at the difference between the 5 million, now I want you to put up the 6 million, and, uh, Tim. So basically, on the backend, it adds, it's adding a million, you know, per year. But, um, so the deficit is, by the time you get to 28, 29 with all these presumptions, it's 3 million instead of 3.9 million. But the focus that I put on it is the mill rate.
Mm-hmm.
And the mill rate we've got for this 6 million, we've got it fluctuating a little bit. Um, but we could also lock it in based on, uh, you know, what we're gonna use for other purposes. But here, we're talking about at 6 million, the, uh, you know, we could hit a high of 8.58 in the year 26, 27, and then it could be going down to $8. Now toggle back to the 5 million, again, a difference of a million dollars, but we're talking about, uh, an annual uh, mill rate, you know, that will also be, um, you know, very reasonable, there's, the highest one is 8.46, so.
Where, where are you seeing that, Jamie, that's, it's eight, uh?
8.28, I'm sorry, I'm looking on this old one, cause we didn't get, I, I didn't have the, the new one.
So, so for 6, for 6 million, our current mill rate is 8.24, so at, at 6 million, it would, it would need to go up to 8.41.
I should've been looking at my paper instead of my computer, I got it.
So it need to, it would need to go to 8.41 to 6 million. Um, for 5 million, it would go from 8.24 to 8.28.
So 4 cents.
4 cents, uh, essentially it comes out to be, to go to 5 million, it'd be about $4 increase in property tax payment per $100,000 of home value.
So if you have a $500,000 home.
It would be about an extra, it'd be about $20 a year to do a $5 million referendum in property tax.
Mr. President?
If it was levied.
If it was all of, yep.
Yep, doesn't have to be levied, the taxes don't have to go up, only if, I mean, if the state aid, they were to change the formula, like Kate said, we lobbied hard and they got it to change, so that we don't get penalized for increasing property values, or, um, declining enrollment, that would be, uh, that'd be nice, but we have to deal with what the law is, not what we want it to be, so.
Ms. President?
Yes.
I'm, uh, I've been thinking about this quite a bit, and it's not a matter of, we go to referendum with reoccurring, and we're fortunate enough where it passes, it is not a matter of when we go back and ask again, it's when. And so I think, because our, our public, um, there's some degree of trust, I think we've seen that with some of our past referendum. Um, but our public is going to want to know, are we fiscally responsible, are we doing the right things with money that they're providing us? Is there, in lieu of looking at mill rate, or necessarily dollars per se, and of course, it all rolls into the final ask, but is there a term by which where we can tell the public, and again, it's not if, it's when, but we will not come back to you for five years? And whatever those dollars amount, that dollar amount is, cause right now, looking at the projections, even $6 million, we're negative again in three years. Now certainly there's some cost effective, you know, measures that we can take, but is there something where we can tell the public? We're asking for this, it's reoccurring, and we won't ask you again for five years.
Yeah, yeah, I believe, I believe at, at either 5 or 6 million, I mean, we'll have to make some cuts, cause one of the things that's, one of the things that's in here is the declining enrollment. And so it's our enrollment going down, but our staffing staying, staying even. And so if our enrollment continues to go down, we, we're gonna make additional, we're gonna make additional cuts to staffing.
Yep.
I mean, and so that's why, you know, I have every reason to believe that, yes, we can, we can get at least five years, if not more, out of, out of either of these two referendums, obviously the 6 is gonna give us a little bit more of a cushion. Um, but either of these two would, would definitely get us the full five years, cause I think over five years, if we had to, we could cut another 2.7 million if our enrollment went down. Now, if our enrollment, let's say flattened out, and we didn't drop 200 students, then it, it, we're gonna be in the black.
Yep, and so for, just talking for myself, whatever commitment, whatever the resolution is, I would like there to be consideration of, of that commitment.
Mm-hmm.
That we commit to the public, we won't go back for five years. Cause I think two years, Jamie, you showed the, the two years, it'd be great to go 10.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but to be able to tell the public that five years, and we're committing to it.
You mean not going back for another reoccurring referendum?
Correct, for five years.
Yeah, I mean, you can absolutely make those statements, however, uh, current board cannot tie the hands of future boards?
Nope.
You know, but you can absolutely make that commitment as a board to say, we're not, you know, if we get this passed, we will do everything within our power not to have to come back and ask again. Um, and I believe, uh, wholeheartedly, given all the information we have, that we would not need to come back.
Yeah, I mean, my only caveat would be is, these predictions are over two biennial budgets.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have any control over that.
For sure, for sure.
The state says we're gonna freeze revenue limits like they did.
Mm-hmm.
And give us zero. and give us zero, you might not be able to outer that. I mean, I just, because we don't have any control of what that, but I would say if you base our assumptions of what are on there, yes, I think that that's a fair assessment.
Use conservative assumptions and say, if these assumptions come through, we can guarantee we're not going to come back for five years.
Yep.
But, yeah, any, anytime, I don't want to have it unconditional without referring to some assumptions, because you don't know what the legislature is going to do, and we don't have any control over, you know, how many babies are being created in the next nine months to be able to, uh, the next year or so, to be able to affect that, that enrollment four or five years out. So. All right. So is there any other discussion? Otherwise, I entertain a, a motion regarding the resolution language?
And so it would be, um, so it's that, that first document, so it's either this one for five, or the one for six, whatever, if somebody wants to make a motion on, and you would just, uh, read the, read the resolution, if somebody wants to make that motion.
Just a quick question to clarify. So basically, the person making the motion is making the decision of five or six and seconding, and then it passes or it doesn't pass?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure I understand the procedure.
And?
And discussion?
Yeah. So, so we don't have the opportunity to vote one down in favor of, and then redo it with a different amount.
Sure you can. Yeah, you can do it as many times as you want.
Well, we could do it in the form of an amendment, too. I mean, you make the main motion, and if the discussion is going in a direction, where they don't want, they don't like the way the motion was phrased, it could be, I move to amend to six million. Or I can move to amend to five million.
Yep. And then the original, the original person would have to accept the friendly amendment, and then you have to vote on the amendment. And then, then it would be changed, and then you would vote on, then you would vote on it. So. Uh, but yes, you could, the first person could pick one, and then if it fails, then somebody else could make a resolution with a different number.
And using the presumptions, uh, or the assumptions that we have, and, um, the benefit of the Baird projections, it's basically a difference of an annual increase of twenty dollars or eighty-five dollars on a half million dollar house. That's what it comes down to.
On, yeah, on a half a million dollar house. Yep.
Yep. Which is getting pretty close to the average, uh, house in Hudson. So, uh, is there, is there anyone want to make the motion? Was? I'll make the motion. Go ahead.
So we have to read this? Okay. Be it resolved by the school board of the school district of Hudson, St. Croix County, Wisconsin, that the final school district budget shall include an amount of five million dollars each year in excess of the revenue limits imposed by section one twenty-one dot point nine one of the Wisconsin statutes commencing with the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year on a recurring basis for the purpose of paying district operation, maintenance, and staffing costs. Be it further resolved that pursuant to section one twenty-one dot nine one paren three of the Wisconsin statutes, the foregoing resolution be submitted to the electors for approval or rejection at the election to be held on November fifth, twenty twenty-four. Adopted this twelfth day of August, twenty twenty-four.
Not adopted yet. Let's not get ahead of ourselves. All right. So, all right. We've got the, we've got resolutions. They're second?
Second.
All right, second, Megan. All right. Uh, any further discussion? I'll just briefly say that I fully support the five million. I'm glad that you chose that amount, Molly. We didn't even script this out ahead of time. So. But I tend to be a little bit more conservative on the fiscal side, and, um, I'm pretty confident that we'll be in good shape for five years with that amount. And I don't like going out and asking for more, uh, than necessarily what we think we absolutely need. We asked for eight million because that's the way the projections were going previously, but we've made some cuts. And if it's looking like we're going to be tight in that fifth year, um, we'll just have to tighten our belt, make some cuts, and go into the unassigned fund to cover the difference. Were you going to say something? No. All right. Kate?
I guess I echo some of that in saying, I, I absolutely hate asking the public for more money. Um, I'm fiscally conservative. I feel like we've made so many moves towards cutting, um, whether it's the, our footprint, whether it's how many schools we have, um, our administration building, the UU property, cutting two million dollars nearly of, um, our budget. And it's hard to know what else to do. And so I, I would vote for the five million dollar referendum. But it's hard. It's hard to ask our public for that.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I agree with Kate and with you, Jamie. If the five million, um, will get us to the same place and cover, um, our expenses and, you know, possibly, hopefully, we won't have to use it all. And twenty dollars is, um, a lot, sounds a lot better than eighty-five. Uh, and, and same thing that Kate, I, I do feel bad for asking people, uh, to pay. Public good of, of education is important, but I do feel bad for, um, asking people to keep on paying, increasing. So.
Ms. President?
Uh, yep. I heard Bob.
And I would, yeah, under, under, I would say that I think we've done a, a much better job than in the past uh, with the community conversation and even, you know, the discussions last year with parents and community members about the potential uh, closure of schools and things like that. So this is not, I think the community knows our situation much more clearly than they did before. So I feel much more confident, uh, going into this referendum ask, and, and yes, of course, no one likes to have to ask for money. But, uh, if you can sell from, from the evidence for the state, uh, we're certainly not the only people in this, in this position. So it's not something to, to, you know, lament, something to deal with and move forward.
Rob? It'll be up to, uh, this board and certainly future boards to continue to develop and maintain that trust. It'll be important and to next point, you know, we can't bind the hands of future boards. But if the public, for whatever reason, doesn't continue to trust us, it's only going to lead to bad things for our district. So I, I am fully supportive of this. It'll be, it'll be up to us and, and future boards to make sure that we're helping the public understand our, our needs.
Any further comments on this? Call the question. All those in favor of the resolution language establishing the amount for the referendum to be held on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, it's approved unanimously. Next up?
We need, uh, there's a second vote, uh, and that is the second action item on the agenda, even though it sounds like it's basically the same thing. Bonnie, do you know which part?
Yep. So I think they just have to read the, that, the top.
The title?
Lines or?
What's that?
The, just the title, they just have to approve.
Just read the title, don't have to read the whereas and everything.
There were, and you can just say everything below it. It's, this is a.
Yep. It's just approving that we are going to referendum.
That we're going to go to referendum.
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, I make a motion for the resolution of providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of a resolution to exceed the district's revenue cap commencing with the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and all this language that follows.
Second.
Any further discussion? Can you scroll up, Tim, just so that we see the other sections, and it's just showing the, uh?
Showing the polling places, the notice to electors, it's all the exhibits, so we want to make sure that we will put notices in the newspaper. We also talks about, um, how we'll report the results and the types of notices, what dates those will be on, um, absentee ballots. So it's, it's the nuts and bolts of what are, basically, our bond council says we have to put out there.
And by the way, I don't think it was mentioned earlier, but, um, we have, if we're going to put something on the ballot, there's only a few days every year that you can do that. In the even number of years, we have more, because there's more elections. Otherwise, it can only be on regular election dates. And that would give us, it's too late to do it, uh, for this, tomorrow night, tomorrow night is the, is the, uh, primary, fall primary. But, um, for November, it would have been two weeks from tonight. And we could have considered it then, but I think, um, it's better that we're doing it at this meeting and, um, consistent with just open transparency and so forth. So is there, because we have, as it said in that notice, we got October deadlines for publishing and so forth, of the referendum questions. Any further questions on that? Otherwise, all those in favor of signif- uh, of the second resolution, um, as stated by Megan, do we have a second from this?
Yes.
Who was that? Rob. Thanks, Rob. Then all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and it's approved. Next up? All right. So we have, uh, fund balance designation.
This is Bonnie.
Yep. So this is an annual item. Um, we're just updating our, um, fund balance designations. Really, it's, um, down by the, um, restricted where the big changes are. Um, kids, Get Kids Ahead Initiative, um, we spend some of those designated funds, so that would be reduced down to seventy-six thousand. Um, there's a school-based mental health grant that we were able to carry over, so we could designate that, and also Act fifty-nine money. Um, our biggest change would be the property insurance, um, hail claim. We didn't clear it out, we're close, um, but we had one point eight million dollars designated. We've made those payments, and we're down to twenty-nine thousand. Governors back to school aids, we use some of those funds in student learning this year, and then some of those next year earmarked for the new, um, salary schedule. And then we are going through our audit this year, this week, um, our unassigned fund balance should be determined within the next month.
So, uh, this, is this for discussion only? Do we have to approve?
You need to approve it.
All right. And, um, as far as the number that we're approving on the unassigned, because it says TBD.
Yep. So the unassigned is just the default of whatever is not, um, identified above it. That's what it rolls into.
And just remember that all of these things, you know, in the restricted, you can't spend it on anything other than those things. The non-spendable are things that are prepaid, you know, those are probably August payroll type of items. The capital projects, the fifteen million, that's what you've already committed to the, um, North Hudson, uh, E.P. Rock Middle School projects, and then our self-funded hun- uh, health insurance fund balance, that is. Because we are self-funded for health insurance, that's kind of a rainy day. If for some reason our claims exceeded our premiums, we'd have that to fall back on. So, you're, you're not really, you're not adding, and you're not, uh, claiming anything to this. It's just reaffirming what we've already, actually reducing the amounts that we have.
And if something were to happen during the school year, we can pull money out of the unassigned fund balance?
Correct. Correct.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a mo- motion to, um, approve the projected June, um, June thirty, twenty twenty-four, committed an unassigned fund balance summary as submitted.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the fund balance summary, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and it's approved. Next up, we have, we're getting into a section of, of the meeting where we're approving policies. New policy regarding memorials and funerals. This is a first reading. Dave, is this? No, Bonnie, sorry. Scared you a little bit there?
Um, so we've not had a policy on how to deal with memorials and funerals in the district. So basically, this, um, with a template from WASB and other districts creates procedures for our building administrators to kind of know what to do when these situations occur. So no changes since the committee of the, um, hall.
This has a little bit different look than other policies, and that's because there's not a specific one from WASB?
Correct. Correct.
Anyway, this is something that we've discussed at our work session and has been available for board review. Any further questions or comments on this? Again, before anything becomes policy, it requires two readings, and this is just the first reading.
Ms. President?
Yes, Rob.
So just a question from a discussion standpoint, you know, the, the death of a student or a teacher is a, is a, is a community event. Out of curiosity, in lieu of the superintendent making that determination, would it make sense for the board to make that determination? Just a question.
Yeah, if you guys want that. I mean, if you want that decision-making, I'm more than happy to, to give it up. I mean, part of the reason, sometimes when things are put into my, uh, purview, it's be, it's because times of the essence, you guys need to make decisions. You have to notice a meeting, properly notice, twenty-four hour notice, and get it agended, and then get you guys all together. And so some of these things are sometimes quick turnaround, and that's why it's usually given to me. But if the board would rather have that decision-making ability, I would have no problem, uh, not having to be involved in that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I feel a little bit differently than Rob on this. I feel like, um, it would be the role of the superintendent to know what is happening in our district and in our schools, and what events are happening so that, you know, he or she would know when, when and if we can have an event like that. So I, I don't feel like that would be kind of a policy role for the board.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with Lynn there. I understand the question, Rob, but funerals are like one of those things where time is of the essence often, and if, if people, you know, are we all going to be able to get together? Are we all going to be able to vote on it? Um, and I think, uh, it, it makes sense for you to have to carry that, Nick.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
Yes.
I think, uh, the large funeral we had, uh, for a fallen police officer was a, an example of how decisions were being made immediately. And, uh, and Nick did a great job with, and, and his staff did a great job handling that and getting that geared up, and it was wonderful. I can't think of how screwed up that might have been if we had to try and get a special meeting together and so. But I do understand you're the question.
Same.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I just think it would be good for the public to know why we're creating this, uh, policy. Uh, I think it's important, but just why now versus before?
Yeah, well, and we, we've run into some challenges, especially, uh, our first big challenge happened when we were, uh, remodeling the high school project. A lot of times what will happen, whether it be death of a student or death of a stand, uh, staff member, is people want to create a memorial for them. Uh, and what happened with the high school site is, uh, where we were going to put the new entrance to the high school, there were, I think, four memorial benches that had been, uh, purchased, uh, by families and placed by families there. And so we had to reach out and, uh, talk to them about moving those things. And it, and it creates a real, uh, tough situation for those families, uh, and, and trying to move away from that. Same thing, some people say, what about planting a tree, or things along those lines? You know, one of the challenges happens, what happens, you know, if the tree doesn't make it, uh, or if, you know, we have to cut the tree down because we need to get into a certain, so all of those things create some challenges for us that create, um, an issue for families. And so this was, this was brought, Bonnie had brought it up, uh, because we had, uh, some folks that wanted to do, uh, some memorials inside the building, um, for, I think, uh, you know, student, and so, uh, or, uh, students or staff members, and it's like, we have to get some level of consistency here, um, in, in what that looks like. And so Bonnie did a great job researching this, uh, trying to look at what other districts have done. But as she said, WASB doesn't have a definitive policy. And so we worked with building principals, Bonnie did a nice job getting feedback from building principals and, and, and their thoughts on things as well, uh, to, to draft this. It's, it's not that we don't want to try to accommodate, it's just, we experience firsthand what it means to have to move those things or have them be removed, and, and it is not a great experience for the families. So.
And I think it's a good idea to have something in writing that gives, because, you know, we'll have future superintendents and future administrative staff so they can go to something, these are the factors we look at when making a decision like this. Is there, uh, a motion?
No, you'll just, so the way it works is, so you guys discuss this at a work session, you don't take any action. Then you'll have the first reading, which is tonight. So you'd approve the first reading. It's still not the policy of the district. It's just, you approve the first reading of it. And then it'll come back, uh, in September for a second reading.
I move, we approve, um, new policy three, two, three, point three, memorials and funerals. Um, move on to the second reading.
Second.
All right. We have motion, a second, to approve the first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the policy, um, first reading is approved. The policy is not in effect yet. So next up would be, uh, the school wellness. Again, another policy we've discussed before. This apparently has an update, but we're looking at a first reading tonight.
This is Bonnie again.
Sorry, last one. Don't be done with me. Um, so the summer, um, Taryn and myself met with. So, the summer, Tera and myself met with the district wellness committee. There's a requirement that we complete a triennial assessment of our policy. So, we did do that this summer, so that was in there. What we did find out, though, when we were looking at the guidelines of what our policy has to contain, we were missing three things. One, we had to refer that we'd completed the triennial assessment. So, that has been included into the policy. We're required to update and inform the public of our wellness policy and what we did. So, that was included into the policy. And then the USDA requires that the nondiscrimination statement issued by them is included in our policy. So, those three items were added to the policy that was in place. Other than that, there were no changes to the, the policy content. And we were selected this year to be, have our site visit with DPI for Food and Nutrition Program. So, one of the, the criteria is that we have updated our wellness policy, which we did this summer.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Oh, I make a motion to approve the updated policy number four-fifty-eight, school wellness, the first reading.
Second?
All right, we have a motion, second by Molly. Is there any further discussion regarding updating policy four-five-eight? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The first reading is approved. Next up is policy one-one-three, nondiscrimination.
This is Tara.
It is. First thing to note, it says new policy, not an update to a policy. You'll see a new recommended policy number, which is one-thirteen. That's matching WASB's recommendation policy number for this. Previously, we had policy four-thirteen and five-thirteen, and you'll see that right there in the first paragraph. We have separate policy for student sexual nondiscrimination and one for employee sexual nondiscrimination.
And they're still in effect, even with this policy?
Correct. So, you'll see that these are for any allegations of sex discrimination occurring after August first. We're going to run our policies concurrently, because if anything is before August first, we need to refer to policy four-thirteen or five-thirteen. I think it's important to note that we're going to combine the student and the staff, and that it is not just students for students. It could be an employee-to-employee investigation. It could be student to employee or student to student. So, that's why we are combining them. It does look different, similar to the policy Bonnie just had, as it's not a specific WASB or Neola policy. We looked at both, and attorneys recommended this policy that we're working from tonight. A lot of them were very long, this is very long. Part of the reason for the length is the grievance procedure, which is the procedure we follow as a district on what we do if we receive a complaint. Important notes in this policy is the updates. The first update, and I should have gone in order, but I have my notes here, is it talks about pregnancy in this Title IX, and pregnancy-related conditions. That's for students and for staff. That's new for Title IX as of August first. It also talks about investigations. There's a lot of different moving pieces when there's a Title IX investigation, whether it's an investigator, a decision-maker, an appeal. Before, those all had to be separate parties. Now, because of a lot of smaller districts didn't have enough people to provide all of the parts with, for an investigation, now all of those different pieces could be the same person. So, they've made it easier in terms of investigations. We've also added two coordinators, as you'll see in there. Myself will be specifically for students. Andrea will be for staff. So, two separate coordinators, us working together if we have any situations on staff and student, Title IX investigations. It did change training. Training is now annually, all staff. Whether you're working in the lunchroom, whether you're a crossing guard, whether you're a coach, teacher, us as administrators, we all have to have annual training on Title IX. That is in effect. The other piece does, it didn't have a definition of sex. It did include sexual orientation and gender identity for the definition of sex. If you notice in here, there is no discussion of sports. The long fifteen-hundred-page federal regulations has not made a final rule on sports yet. If you want to read that long document, around page twelve-hundred-something, it talks about the amount of comments that they receive, and that currently, the, the current, one of the, the current rules apply. So, here in Hudson, we would follow W, and we still do, follow WIAA on any transgender students in sports.
And Tara, just to, just so everybody's clear, you can find WIAA's policy on transgender children participating in sports. It's a two thousand eighteen memo that they put out. It's a two-page memo. It's on their website. That still is kind of carrying the, carrying the day right now. And so, if, if somebody wants to look that up, that is, right now, kind of the law of the athletic land in the state of Wisconsin. Because the new policy, the new Title IX guidance specifically says, we're going to give you more guidance on athletics, we're just not doing it in this first fifteen-hundred pages. So, that's, that's a, that's a big, a big piece.
Correct. Those are the only updates.
Okay, so we're reducing two separate policies, one for staff and one for students, and creating one that will combine them. But the other two policies will stay in effect because of the grandfather...
There's no stat, yeah, there's no standard limitations on when somebody can make a complaint. So, if someone comes back in October and says this happened in May of twenty twenty-four, we have to refer to policy four-thirteen and five-thirteen, so...
Mr. President?
Rob?
And so, this, this policy has nothing to do with sports, is what you've said.
Correct.
We're following WIAA policy.
Correct.
So, question, because I'm ignorant. I'm not a fan of boys walking into girls' locker rooms. That said, you know, is, well, hypothetical situation. So, starting middle linebacker, Monday, gets done with practice, great practice. Tuesday comes in and says, I feel like I'm a woman today. With, with the policy, would the, would that male student then, you know, transitioning, if you will, would that middle linebacker have the right to walk into the girls' locker room?
No.
Okay, why is that?
The Title IX policy has nothing to do with sports.
WIAA policy?
WIAA policy?
No.
There's a lot of pieces to that, potentially, I guess, the, potentially. If they meet all of the pieces on the WIAA transgender policy, then yes, they could.
Okay, but it can't, I guess, to put my example, you can't have the middle linebacker Monday decide they want to transition Tuesday and just walk into the girls' locker room. Okay.
Well, the other thing about this policy, as I was going to say, it not only will eventually replace both policies, because, but this policy, not only does it not mention athletics, it also does not mention bathrooms or restrooms.
Or locker rooms, yep.
Yep. And so, what this is doing is it's referring to Title IX. So, if Congress decides to change the language of Title IX, we don't have to change our policy. That's up to Congress. It's not up to us to change Title IX. We can't do that. So, secondly, also, when it comes to interpreting what it means, because right now, we've got, as was referenced, we've got about half of the states that have an injunction in place and the other half don't. And ultimately, it's going to be, end up in the Supreme Court. We don't have to play the Supreme Court as to what Title IX means. Where we're setting forward here is a grievance procedure to say, if you are discriminated, this is what happens, and how your case may be addressed. So, it requires just an act of discrimination. Whether it's discrimination or not, that's determined by Congress in the language of Title IX and interpreted by the courts ultimately. And right now, we have conflicting courts, I guess, in the court of appeals level. That'll get decided by the Supreme Court.
So, Mr. President?
Yes?
So, question for Nick, Tara. What is, is there any legal peril if we don't take action on this tonight?
So, as I, as I sent you guys the email from our attorney. So, the injunction, as it relates to the twenty-six states. It enjoins the Department of Ed from holding school districts accountable for implementation of the new rule. However, what you have to understand is, the injunction is by Kansas court, not our circuit. It did, it enjoined for people that have children in school districts in other states that are members of three different, I think, organizations. We do have those students in, in our district, or parents of those students, in four of our eight buildings, according to the most recent list. So, that means in four of our buildings, there are, the Department of Ed is enjoined from enforcing it, and in four of our buildings, they're not. And, you know, our legal counsel has, as sent, said, you, right now, for, for at least the four buildings that aren't enjoined, this is the law of the land, whether people agree with it, don't agree with it. In addition, we already have the Seventh Circuit of Appeals, in the Kenosha case, Whitaker versus Kenosha, that was settled in two thousand seventeen, that is our jurisdiction, that says we have to follow this discrimination definition. We don't, we don't have a choice. That is the law. And our attorneys have said, if you choose to not follow the law when you are told this is what you're supposed to do, that is willful negligence. You then would open yourself up to exposure from a liability standpoint if somebody was to sue the district based on discrimination, and we didn't have a procedure in place for how we're going to deal with discrimination. So, they believe, as I forwarded on to you, the recommendation is, your liability comes from not having a procedure in place to address, to address this, especially for the four buildings that, that aren't part of the injunction. So, it's a, it is a horrendous position to be in, because you have courts saying lots of different things. And the Supreme Court is going to have to act on this. They have punted, according to our attorney, they've punted four times already, where they haven't chosen to act. And, and it creates, but the legal advice that we're getting from our legal counsel is put the procedural safeguards in place for investigation of new Title IX violations starting August first. And that's what this is. This is a procedural thing of how we would investigate Title IX complaints moving forward. That's their recommendation. And I've sent all that stuff to you as we're through it. I think Megan hit something, and then I think Kate hit something.
Mr. President, so from, the injunction thing is crazy confusing. I've never, not that I know a lot about injunctions, but I've never seen anything like this. But from my understanding, this doesn't change all that much on the ground for our school district in terms of how, like, we already have harassment and bullying poli, like, it's not okay to harass or bully anybody at our schools for any reason, right? Like, it's never okay. It doesn't matter if someone doesn't like your pants, right? Like, this doesn't, this doesn't change that. But if we don't approve this, we open ourselves up to possible legal liability, which then could make the school district have to pay, if we lose a lawsuit, that our insurer wouldn't cover, which would then fall back on our taxpayers to have to cover possibly.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that is what we're being told by legal counsel. So, it's what I forwarded on to you guys from Sheena last week. And the, the thing is about attorneys is everybody has an opinion, right? I mean, you know, different attorneys have different opinions on this. This is what our school attorney says. Went through another Title IX, Tara and I sat through another Title IX law thing last week up at CISA eleven. It was the same recommendation from another law firm out of, out of the Twin Cities. Went to the legal conference in July for WASDA. Same recommendation from a different attorney. In order to provide the district the most legal coverage, you would implement this set of procedures for investigating a Title IX complaint. That's what, that's what we're consistently being told, is that's, that gives you the most coverage. There is the chance that insurance company could say, you've been given the legal advice to, to do these things. You choose not to do these things, we may not indemnify you and cover your expenses associated with something that, that you're doing.
Any further questions?
Oh, I do. So, I'm reading what Sheena sent us. So, I just want to read it, so everybody has this clear. It says, we also do not believe that a school district that fails to meet the August first deadline has any real risk of losing its funding. Indeed, we are not aware of any cases of a school district losing federal funding because it's failed to timely adopt a mandatory policy. And we do not believe this to be the case here, especially those school districts, not schools, included in one of the lists submitted to the court. I mean, that's from our attorney.
Yeah, that's, that's literally what I said, yeah.
Mr. President?
And we tabled this a couple of weeks ago, so now I'm curious why we're coming back to it.
Mr. President? I think it's two different things, Kate, like, so...
Yep, that was, can I, that was referring to having the policy in effect by August first. If you didn't have the policy in effect, there was discussion on can you lose funds? So, I think, and I don't want to speak because I didn't see that email, but I've...
We're going to have silence in the crowd, all right? And if you can't be quiet, then we're going to be asking you to leave, all right? This is a civil proceeding here. You had your opportunity for speaking, that was at the beginning of the meeting. That opportunity is done, all right? So, go ahead, Tara.
So, I believe that's what the August, by having, not having the policy in place by August first, and why we've waited, partially waited, we've attended a lot of legal conferences and trainings to see what our best course of action was. So, if I misspoke on that, maybe that's what you were going to say on two different pieces.
Well, I think it's two different things. Like, you, losing your federal funding, the feds don't give you your funding, is different than you are at risk for a lawsuit if we haven't implemented the policy, and there's a Title IX complaint, and we're not using the procedure. Those are two different...
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we're at risk of losing federal funding. I mean, her next paragraph after the one you read was, however, we remain concerned about potential liability arising out of a complaint filed by an individual, a student slash family, arising out of a Title IX complaint, which could involve a transgender, gender nonforming, or more likely cisgender students who are victims of sexual harassment or sexual assault on the district's property and within the school district's programs. Given the new Title IX regulations primarily discuss how districts are required to process complaints of sexual harassment assault, it is likely the lawsuit challenging how the school district process the complaint will focus on the school district's failure to adopt the complaint procedures as part of a pursuit of damages. So, hers, what she's basically saying is, the, the set of procedures, so it, it doesn't have to be transgender-related. It could be anybody that files a Title IX complaint. They could argue that because we don't have the proper procedures in place, that we have failed to do our due diligence, and then that would put us with liability. That's, that's the, that's the paragraph that is most concerning, is because it outlines, it's more of a procedural change for us than anything.
I just, I, this is from my heart, but I don't think it is procedural. I feel like the Olympics, I never in a million years would have thought that I saw what I saw with men taking over women's sports. And I have daughters, and I absolutely will not ask them to take a backseat to having somebody change. And I know you're saying that's not in the policy, but there's a lot of things that I didn't think would happen that are happening.
Totally get it.
And I, this is something where I absolutely have to take a stand on. I, I can't believe some of this wording. I can't believe that our society is right here. I think in the, to be transparent, we should talk about what is happening in the school now. So, I mean, it's, it's a little scary, and I don't, I think a lot of us are there, Tara, so I'm not picking on you. But when we say, could they go in the locker room, couldn't they? And it's like, die, gosh, I don't know, potentially. And then I hear no, and then, that's scary.
Clear, and maybe I didn't answer or understand Rob's question. Could they go into the locker room under our current practices? Yes. Playing sports on a different team? No.
I don't understand.
If a transgender student is going to use a locker room or a restroom of their gender, let's say, Rob's example, can you share your example again, so I can...
Middle linebacker, Monday, great practice. Tuesday decides they want to turn, change genders on Tuesday.
So, if that middle linebacker decides they are female the next day, they can, under our current, the twenty-seven, twenty-seven... our current, the 2017 Seventh Circuit, they can use the restroom and the locker room of the gender that they identify with.
And that's not, that's not a school district policy. That's, that's a, that's, that's, that's federal law. I mean, that's, and it's, and what we put in in our memo in 2023 was, we wouldn't allow that to happen until the parents, until the parents of that student were involved in that discussion. So no, they couldn't just say, I'm going to, today I'm going to do this, but wait a minute, we need to have a conversation with your parents before we go down that path. We are not going down a path. However, it's, that's, we don't have the ability. The Elkhorn School District, it was just, they tried to, they tried to block that, and a federal judge, just in the last week, said, well, this is on appeal, you have to allow transgender students to use the bathroom and locker room of which, of, of who they, where they identify, while on appeal, because more than likely, you're going to lose your lawsuit, Elkhorn School District, because it's already been settled by a three-judge panel in the Seventh Circuit, which is the court that oversees the state of Wisconsin. There's, it's, we, we don't, it's not a school district policy, it's a, it, it's just the law we're, we're required to follow. It's, it's, we don't have, we don't have a choice. And our attorney's been in here to explain that in the past. Whether you agree or don't agree with it, I'm not saying, you know, one way or the other, I'm just saying, we don't have a choice. It is currently the law of the land.
Mr. President? Is it, is it something we could have Shayna be in for an open meeting and discuss this with us?
Absolutely.
I think, I think the public needs to hear from our, from our legal counsel. Once again, it's just not, they don't just handle our district, they handle many districts and, and deal with this often. And I, I think Jamie said it very well earlier, where we, we have to deal with what the law is, not what we want it to be. And that's kind of, that's, that's where I am. I'm not a constitutional scholar or a hobbyist, and so I'm, you know...
That's why we pay the lawyers what we do have for their advice.
Mr. President? Yeah. And so, I mean, a couple of things. First off, WIAA, whatever, I'm not a fan of somebody 24 hours later, just having the ability to walk into a locker room. That said, this, the, the issue at hand is this Title IX procedural piece. Does this have anything at all to do with students having the ability to walk into a locker room, bathrooms? Does this give or add to the rights, if you will, of a transgender student to walk into, basically any bathroom?
I would say, in some states, this does.
Was it, in Wisconsin?
In Wisconsin, this has no impact on that, because in 2017, the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals already ruled on this. But there are states, 26 of them, as people talked about, that, that aren't in the Seventh Circuit, that this would give in those states additional, additional rights. That's just not the case here. That's why, for us, this is more procedural than anything. And, you know, the downside, one of the downsides of, of this policy or the new Title IX interpretations is, we have to now train every single staff member in Title IX every single year. I mean, you want to talk about unfunded mandates, it's an hour-long training every year for every staff member in the district. There's, there's not much, I mean, there's not, not much we can do about that. But I mean, but as far as, as it relates to transgender, the transgender discussion has already been settled in the courts that govern the Hudson School District. That's not the case in Florida, or Kansas, or some of these other states. In those states, it's a much bigger, it would be a much bigger change.
Mr. President, I just, you know, I understand why you share that example, Rob, but I, I don't, that's not what happens, you know? Like, transgender kids aren't the starting linebacker, and just decide it's going to be fun to be trans, or like, want to change sports. You know, that doesn't, it doesn't happen. And I, I, there's not a lot of trans students in our district, there's not a lot of trans students in general, it's a small minority, it is a minority of students that is more likely to suffer from violence, to suffer from suicide attempts, to suffer from depression, and I just, I don't want any family that might be watching this, or some kid who may or may not be out, to watch this meeting and think their school district doesn't want them to feel safe at school every day. Because I think we all, in this room, want every kid to go to our school and feel safe and not be bullied every day. Every kid needs an education, every kid needs to be able to be ready to get a job, go to college, whatever their path is. So I think we want to be careful that whoever we're talking about, we all talk about it with kindness and putting kids first, all kids.
Megan, I, I would agree that all students should feel safe, all students should feel not bullied. They should come to school and feel that they're in a safe environment, no matter where they are, which includes transgender kids, but I also look at my, my daughter, who's going to be a senior. And so, from a rights perspective, how do we, how do we help those transgender students and not, you know, the middle linebacker who one day feels it's funny to say that they are changing, but also balance that with the rights of my daughter? Because she shouldn't feel awkward, or that she should give up track because there's a transgender student in that locker room. And so how do you, how do you balance the rights of both students, so they both feel safe, they both are encouraged to do the things they want to do, and they both develop as, as they want? So how, and I guess that's a, we don't have to answer that tonight, but I mean, the rights of both are important.
I go back to the policy here, looking at definitions and what it relates to. It relates to complaints, it defines complainants. It talks about parental status and expands the definition, biological, adopted, foster, stepparent, illegal custodian or guardian. Talks about parties, it talks about the term relevant. Nowhere in there is there a definition for the term of, you know, does it relate to athletics or bathrooms? So we're injecting into this something that this policy doesn't even deal with.
Mr. President, the why, why has this come up?
Because Title IX was changed, certain things were expanded, whether you agree with that or not, that's what the... Well, one of them is this pregnancy, didn't, the pregnancy and related conditions. It defines even that. So getting back to making a personal family and stuff, if my daughter were to be getting, you know, in a situation where she was pregnant, I would want her to have the protections afforded by the law and afforded in the complaint procedures if she was sexually assaulted or discriminated against. But if we don't have policy in place that does that, then they don't have it, and then we're exposing ourselves to liability. This is going to have way more application to things other than transgender than it will to transgender issues, way more. There's been a lot of things with Title IX that I don't agree with, all right?
Like, what? I mean, because the way that you're explaining it...
Well, it's been used, it can be weaponized, it was weaponized back in the 70s, when my school decided to cut a bunch of boys' sports, because they said they needed to have the same number of sports for women as for men. Now, I think, though, on the whole of it, Title IX has been a good thing for women, and has raised their ability to be an equal gender. And so, that's why, ultimately, what all these mean about the athletics, that's the WIA's purview, it's not in this policy. With regard to bathroom use and all that other stuff, ultimately, the can is, as Nick pointed, was getting kicked down the road. We're not the Supreme Court, and we're not Congress. All we're doing is following a policy that other districts have, that WASB recommends, and what our attorney is recommending. So it's either follow the legal advice of the attorney, that's not going to increase one iota, any rights, or any, increase any instances of people using bathrooms, or being in sports that they're not supposed to. There's other rules that deal with that, that's not addressed in this. This is more procedural, not substantive. There's nothing in here that talks about substantive rights about using bathrooms for athletics.
Mr. President, I am looking at 63 pages of injunctions and litigation given to us by our attorney, and 14 pages that has, I can't even count how many Wisconsin schools are listed, hundreds. To me, it's frightening to pass a policy that has so much going on. Whether it's about this or anything else, I, I wouldn't pass it. So I would recommend to table this until we can talk to our attorney, and, and to wait until all this litigation has passed, so we can actually see what the courts rule.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
So we have a motion to table. Is there any, in a second, is there any further discussion?
I would just like to ask, what is the concern with approving the first read and having attorney or legal discussion come in? And, because we, you know, just by approving this is not voting on it and enacting it. I mean, there's still a second read, there's, there would be a time for legal counsel to speak to us directly. I, I, you know, I think when you, when you say that, you know, why is this, it becomes such a big thing, I think that, like they said, it's, it's a big, a bigger thing in different states, but a lot of the things that a lot of people probably hear are concerned about are already there. It's already the law, and we're already following it, whether, whether it, like it or not.
I can vote on that in 2017, on this policy and procedure.
No, I, I understand totally, yeah. And I'm not trying to change your, your mind or anything, as far as just, I think, I think the idea of tabling it might, you know, we could, we could table it after the, after the, at the next reading, you know, after we have more information.
I just wouldn't feel comfortable voting on something that I'm not understanding very well, and I feel like there's just too many variables that I don't understand enough about, and I would feel much better about making a motion to approve something like this if I had an opportunity to speak with Shayna. You know, if she came to our work session, and we were able to have a robust discussion about this, and we really understand, because clearly, it's controversial, you know? And so, I think we need to have our heads around exactly what it means. And I, I feel like it's premature for me to be able to support it.
Would it be better if Shayna came during opens, during a regular board meeting, where it's, where it's broadcast, or is that okay or not okay?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you can have her come in and, and, and give her take on this, and why her advice is what it is, and I, I don't see an issue with that. I mean, what I'd have to do is check with her and find out which, which dates work for her. I mean, I can't guarantee it's going to be the September regular meeting, it might work better for an August work session, might work better for a September work session. But I can, if, if the board would rather hear from her first, table it right now and hear from her first, we can, we can absolutely set that up, so...
I would, I would support that.
I think, just as a...
No, no, you're not, may not, sir, all right? So go ahead, Molly.
I appreciate that one of the things Megan brought up is being compassionate and empathetic to all people. I, as I listen to what people are saying, I completely understand what you say about your daughter, Rob, and, you know, that's a very, as we know, shower, locker room, all that, very vulnerable time. On the other hand, I understand what you're saying, Jamie, is that we're not the proper authority to take this complaint to, that this is a limited policy that we need, in effect, to protect ourselves. And yet, I also agree with Lynn, I feel like my head is spinning, like, what? What just happened? You know, I think we just need a little more time to understand this and be educated, because none of us are legal scholars here.
So did Kate make a motion then, or...
There was a motion to table, seconded by Lynn. Is there any further debate on the motion to table?
I'm concerned about making moves that go against legal advice and open our district up to possible lawsuits. I think it is a good idea to listen to your lawyers. We are not lawyers, none of us are going to read the 1,500 pages, none of us are going to fully understand the 1,500 pages. Like, I don't know what's in the school lunch regulations that we approve every year, I don't read those. Like, how long are they? I don't know, they're super long. There's all these federal laws and state laws that we are not really in a position to decide upon. And it's not, I, you know, so we're not going to protect pregnant students and staff in this way, we're not going to have the proper procedures that we're supposed to put in place, because I think there is a lot of misinformation around this right now. And I think part of why it's a big deal in some states, Kate, is that student gender identity doesn't, or someone's gender identity wouldn't fall under a Title IX sexual harassment in some states right now. Now, I would hope that everybody on this board and in this room doesn't think anybody should ever be sexually harassed, no matter what. That is like a, that's a line in the sand, it doesn't matter what it's about. So part of that is, those students don't have that protection in other states, to not be sexually harassed based on gender identity. And I know none of us would want that. So I, I, I think it, I think we're making a mistake if we table it.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob?
And so I think, I think we're aligned on a couple of points. First off, none of us are legal scholars, except for Jamie. The safety of all students is important to all of us. And I think there are a number of outstanding questions that, and I agree with Lynn, that for us to be more informed and ask Shayna those questions, because likely she has, or has a team that has read that 1,500-page document, to be able to ask her those questions, and frankly, for all of us to come more prepared when she does come, would be helpful for our community.
Anything further? Otherwise, I guess where I come down on this is, I want to be able to follow our legal advice. I didn't see anything in what Shayna said that said that we have to pass something tonight. If having her here is going to change, I think that she's going to, what she's going to say to our face is going to be what she wrote already. We can follow up questions to that, and then we're going to have a vote. I don't think that we, our solution to anything is kicking the can down the road and stick your head, head in the stand. But if it's going to, if buying time gets us better understanding, more comfort level with what's being decided, then I would be in favor of that. So all those in favor of tabling, yes? Already have the second. All those in favor of tabling, the consideration of this policy signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay? The ayes have it, it's tabled. Is there anybody want to take a break? We still have the handbooks to approve, those shouldn't take super long, but anybody need a break?
I moved a break for five minutes.
Okay. We'll break for five minutes and come back at 9:50, seven.
I've got food.
We ready?
Don't chew in front, that's a...
Five, four, three, two, one. Okay, we're back in session, and next up is going to be the handbooks, and start with the Certified Staff Handbook.
Yes, and so we covered this at the work session, both the Certified Staff Handbook, as well as the Support Staff Handbook, and bringing it to you tonight for approval, hopefully. The primary changes in the Certified, as well as the Support Staff, are updating names and information and insurance rates and contributions towards premiums and all of that kind of information. You can see some examples through the Red Line document that is linked to the agenda. The primary changes for the Certified Employee Handbook is with respect to the adoption of the rate or compensation structure. So we had to get all the language out regarding TSS, put the new language in, there is specific language now addressing credits, both reimbursement, as well as counting credits towards future lane advancement. So that language is in there. The other big addition in this handbook is the personal day language, that's also part of the rate or compensation system. So other than that, it's really updating, like, the extracurricular structures to reflect the increases. There's, we have a new work comp carrier that we have to provide that information in here. Um, so nothing real substantive, other than the rate or compensation system, um, adoption and integration within this handbook.
Okay. Any questions? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the, who?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Bob?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and a second, any further discussion regarding adoption of the Certified Employee, which is basically our, uh, the main change being the compensation system, which has been overhauled, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay? The ayes have it. Next up is the Certified, or no, I'm sorry, the Support Employee Handbook.
Yes, so this is also similar in terms of the modifications of, that you can see the redlining. For them, it's the update to the Support Staff Compensation Structure, reflecting the new wage grid. So that's embedded within this document. We try for both of these documents to make them really a reflection of what their terms and conditions of employment are in the district at a higher level summary. And so, yep, we have, that's just Xed out, and then the next page will show the, the new rates, um, and so all of that's now, it's embedded in here. One thing I wanted to talk about as part of both, is that we are in the process right now of working with a committee to refine our um, practices pertaining to professional electronic and personal boundaries as district staff. And so, I wanted to give you guys a heads up that there will be changes during the school year, as it pertains to our policies, as well as some processes. And so, we're working on, we worked in our leadership retreat last week, and now we're working in a committee to develop some communication with our parents, or with our staff members first, and then subsequently with parents, about some changes that we're looking, again, effective with the start of the school year. Anything that comes out of that could affect handbook language, and that's why I bring that up at this point. But that would be coming up to you guys in the future, once those changes are solidified.
Okay, so we'd be making a mid-year change to the handbook?
Potentially, and we've done that a few times, we did that a lot in COVID. So when we were, um, COVID time, when we were doing layoffs of Support Staff more frequently, and when we were doing some updates of those different laws that were coming into place, I even forget the name of it at this point. Um, but we did a lot of that at that time, it's not something that we do very often, but we're also dealing with a really unique situation that we're trying to adapt, but not rush, um, as we're going forward.
Okay. Any questions for Andrea on the Support Handbook, otherwise entertain a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, Lynn, give us a second to Lynn. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay? The ayes have it, the Support Handbook is approved. And then finally, we have the Student and Family Handbook.
Yep.
What are the changes there?
Um, I wasn't here when you guys first looked at this last meeting, but there is a change since you saw this last time, and the change is to IT, the IT piece of it, about the acceptable use policy, instead of having families and students have a separate policy, we just included it in the handbook.
Where is this, the change?
Um, it's a good question.
I suppose I can look in the table of contents.
Yep.
To the, to the table of content. It isn't really an addition to the handbook, it's just adding a couple of lines so that parents can also sign off on this, and IT doesn't have to then have a whole separate sign-off for parents and students for acceptable use. So it just added, there were just a couple of additional bullet points about Chromebook use and not changing your Chromebook, I mean, nothing significant.
Also, kudos to Tracy, after I met with elementary, middle school, and high school, we pared this down, instead of multiple separate handbooks, to make one K-12 district handbook, um, the beauty that she made out of this would not have happened if I was in charge of the final product, so kudos to her on that.
So basically, the changes are, are, it's, the entire thing is new, because it's a merged document.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Mr. President.
Rob?
So if remember, right, the, the high school version had a signature page for the student, I believe the parent? Will that be added to this, or am I just missing it?
So what will happen in, um, that will all happen through Skyward, so students and parents will have to sign off through Skyward.
The high school does go over this in advisory and does an additional hand signature for students as well.
Okay, thank you, because that was discussed quite a bit previously, when we were talking about handbooks and athletic code, conduct, code of conduct issues. All right, any other questions, comments, otherwise entertain a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
All right, motion by Kate, second by Bob, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the new Student and Family Handbook, uh, that is a universal document for all buildings, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay? The ayes have it. And now, that concludes our action agenda, and I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the language and the agenda.
Mr. President, the board will entertain a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent F, to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, which if discussed in public, would likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second, calls for a roll call vote. We're gonna be reading all the names this time. Bowman.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Garza.
Aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Robson.
Aye.
Rosowski.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. The ayes have it, uh, we are in closed session, we will adjourn from closed session.